Three. And I would like to begin by acknowledging that the municipality of Jasper respectfully acknowledges that Jasper National Park and the municipality of Jasper are on treaty six and treaty eight territories, as well as Meati, Meiti Nation four, a region four. This land is the traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route, and home for the Dinesa, Nahewak, Anish, Nabi, Sekhumbi, Stoli, Nakota, and Meiti. We'll move now on to the agenda. Is there any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda? If not, can I have someone to approve the, approve the agenda? Councilor both? All in favor? Then we can move on to May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, Committee of the Whole Minutes, Business arising from the minutes. Can, is there anything coming out of that that needs to be discussed? Do we move then to accept for information? Going to have some thank you, councilor, Kellahurampi, all in favor? Moving on then to our first presentation. Five point one, the audit. Good morning.
Morning, how's everyone doing?
Feel free to go to move forward, thank you.
Am I good, good to go then, or?
Absolutely.
Okay, awesome, all right, well, um, thanks for having me here today. My name is Jeff Allison, I'm a partner with, with Metrics Group, responsible for the audited services that our firm provides to the municipality of Jasper. So usually with these presentations, I like to start off with just a bit of an overview of an audit. So why we have an audit and the importance of it, and really it's to enhance the degree of confidence of the intended users. So those users being yourselves as, as council members, municipal affairs, rate payers of province of Alberta, those individuals or organizations that would have a vested interest in the financial performance of the municipality of Jaf- of Jasper. And this is achieved by us as auditors expressing an opinion. So we give assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So as auditors, we seek reasonable assurance. So it's a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute. So we do not audit every transaction that happened during the year. Also, as auditors, we exercise professional judgment, maintain professional skepticism, so questioning mind. We stay alert to conditions which may indicate possible misstatement. Areas there would be such as cutoff. We want to make sure that transactions and services that were rendered in the fiscal year twenty twenty one have been accounted for in that year. And those in, in twenty twenty two have been reported in that fiscal year. Also revenue recognition, making sure that revenue is being recognized once services have been rendered. And then as well as the collectability of accounts receivable. So is the amount that's being recorded currently in AR expected to be collected? Or should there be an adjustment to an allowance? Also, a critical assessment of the audit evidence. So is the evidence that we're looking at actual source documentation? Or has anything been manipulated in order for us to have a different, different outcome? So those are just areas when we're talking about an audit, that, that's important. Within the financial statements on page three and four, the financial statements is the, excuse me, is the independent auditors report. So at the top of that report, we give our opinion here that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. The financial position results of operations in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. So those are the accounting standards and framework that all local governments, provincial governments report under across, across Canada. On the next part of the audit report is our basis for our opinion. And here we indicate that our audit was conducted in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards. And those auditing standards are the same across Canada. So whether you're a government organization, a publicly traded company, a not-for-profit, all the, all the auditing standards are the same. It's the reporting frameworks on the opinion side that, that can change. The next part of the audit report is responsibility and management. Those charge your governance for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. And then the auditor's responsibility for the audit on page, page four, page two of the, of the independent Oz report, where it outlines our objective, which is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. Our procedures depend on our judgment. We also consider relevant internal controls and evaluated accounting policies and estimates. So main estimates being the useful life of your tangible capital assets, as well as your allowance for your doubtful accounts. So after the independent Oz report of the financial statement is your statement of financial position. And on this, this page here, it gives you a snapshot of where the municipality was at as that December thirty first, twenty twenty one. You'll see your cash position was up to twenty one million from eighteen point seven. So that was a two point two million dollar increase in the amount of cash year over year. So during the year, the municipality was able to generate positive cash of about three point five million from its operations. You then had spent, sorry, six point six million on tangible capital asset additions. And then had a net change in your debt of five point five million. So you had taken on a new debenture, which caused an increase of six point two million, and then repaid prior debentures of seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that caused your, your cash to have a net increase of two point two million from year over year. After looking at your cash, you have your trade and grants in place of taxes receivables. So this is money owed to the municipality in relation to taxes at year end. So at year end, your current tax in place and taxes were two hundred and forty two thousand, so consistent with prior year. Where you did see an increases in your arrears taxes up to two thirty five from a hundred and forty four. The majority of that was caused by, by one, one, one actual ta- rate payer in the year. So that was kind of tied up into there, but that caused a sixty three percent increase on taxes owing after one year. You do have an allowance still for deemed outstanding taxes of thirty one thousand. Left the municipality with four hundred and forty six thousand in receivables versus three hundred and sixty seven thousand in the prior year. After looking at tax and grants as in place of taxes, other receivables, receivables from other governments, so about two point five million. So these are really made up of individual grants to be collected by the, by the municipality. Trade accounts receivable of one point four million, while that leads to utility services. And then goods and services taxes recoverable at three hundred and fifty one thousand. There is an allowance here as well for three hundred and eight thousand. So there was an increase this year versus prior year. We added seventy three thousand to it for a CN rail rate of way fuel reduction amount that was in receivable that potentially may not be collected. So that's where you see the increase there. And that left the municipality with three point nine million versus three point eight million in other receivables owing. After your trade and other receivables, you have debt recoverable for local improvements. So that's the twelve thousand dollars or principal reduction there. And that was for laneway improvements in the prior year. So as the, the taxes get rendered, that amount decreases in, in relation to debenture. And then a new line item for the municipality this year is the investments. This investment line item comes actually as part of the consolidation with the, with the Regional Waste Waste Commission. So that's four hundred and nineteen thousand of their investments that they own. That comes on to your books. And those are in relation to ATV demand deposit accounts, interest rates ranging from one to two point five percent. And that left the municipality with a total of twenty five point eight million or up two point five million from prior years, twenty three point three when it comes to your financial assets. So after looking at your financial assets, your liabilities, so what the municipality would still owe as that December thirty one, twenty twenty one. So your accounts payable and accrued liabilities is at three point five million. So in there, you got general, general trade or payments to vendors of two point seven million, five hundred and forty thousand in holdbacks, and then other amounts in relation to wages, other government and interest being accrued. Employee benefit obligations are four hundred and ninety five thousand in relation to, to vacation pay as well as sick pay. And then deposit liabilities of sixty nine thousand. After that is your deferred revenue, which is at nine million. So included in deferred revenue is various grants. So when it comes to your operating, you do about nine hundred and twenty thousand in grants to be spent on the next period. You have a lot of grants that run to the end of March of the fiscal year. So that's why you always see, have more in deferred when it comes to operating in relation to FCSS programs, recreation type programs. So money to be spent there. And then when it comes to your capital, your MSI capital started the year at four point two. Your allotment for the year was one point eight million. Five thousand in relation to a rescue vehicle, as well as some ass block parking lot work, left you with five point six million of MSI capital to still be spent in, in future periods. And as well as your Canada Community Building Fund, which used to be called the Federal Gas Tax Program, started eight hundred and eight thousand. Your allocation for the year was five hundred and thirty seven, leaving you with one point three million to be spent in, in future periods. After looking at deferred revenue, your other main liability is your long-term debt, which increased this year to twelve million from six point five. So your long-term debt in the year, you have at year end, you've got about six, six outstanding debentures, or sorry, five with one for the Canadian Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation at two percent for forty nine thousand. Your new debenture is the, from the province of Alberta, is the three point four six percent one or six point two million, which you had taken on in order to, to provide a lotting, lotting services or utility services of a specific parcel land. And then the, the ventures range of maturity from two thousand twenty two to two thousand and fifty one. During the year, you paid interest of about two hundred thousand on those, and principal was repaid of about eight hundred thousand. When it comes to your debt limits based on the Municipal Government Act, so you're allowed to, to take on a total debt equal to one point five times your total operating revenue. So that would be twenty seven point one million for the municipality. Your total debt is at twelve, leaving you with an unused portion of about fifteen point one million. Service on the debt limit, so how much to be repaid every year based on the Municipal Government Act is at four point five million. Your total service debt limit for next year is one point three, meaning that you have an unused portion of three point one million. After looking at long-term debt, you have another new liability on your financial statements in relation to, to the new consolidation of the Regional Waste Commission. So landfill closure and post-closure costs here of a hundred and forty six thousand. What that represents is your twenty five percent ownership of the, of the landfill closure and post-closure liability. So that's now reflected on there. And based on the financial statements for the, for the commission, that's the twenty five percent at that time. So when it comes to total liabilities, you're at twenty five point three million, so up about seven point eight million from prior year seventeen, mainly in relation to additional grants that have been deferred for future years, as well as the addition of the new debenture. So that left your net financial asset position from five point nine million down to five hundred and forty thousand. So what that's kind of telling you is that currently you do have sufficient financial assets. So cash, if you were to collect your receivables to pay off all your obligations and be left with five hundred and forty thousand dollars in cash, once that is completed. So after looking at your net financial assets, your non-financial asset position, tangible capital assets make up the bulk of that, so sixty four million dollars there. So during the year, the municipality had spent six point six million on additions. Construction in progress is up to five point six. They had spent five million on, on that land servicing or for utility services on the, on the lot parcel that you had taken the debenture on. Three hundred and nine thousand for the rescue vehicle, which then got transferred into, into vehicles. And then as well as additions into vehicles there, you had purchased a various amount of, about, I think, four different trucks, a solid waste truck, a one ton as well included in there, machine equipment, engineer structures in relation to eight hundred block Nike launch to pine for that. So those are the additions in the year. And then when it comes to amortization, you, it's a two point eight million. And really what amortization is telling you is that during the year, you purchase assets, say the last five years, ten years, fifty years, you would take a portion of those assets, so say it's a vehicle and it's one-fifth. One-fifth of that cost would be reflected in amortization and come in as an expense on your operations in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. So during the year, with new additions of six point six million and amortization of two point eight, it's showing that the municipality was adding to its tangible capital assets in order to replace the usage in the year of, of current ones there. So you definitely increased your net book value at the sixty four million from sixty in the prior year. After the tangible capital assets, you have prepaid expenses of three hundred and sixty three thousand was left you with total non-financial assets of sixty four point six, or an increase of three point seven million from prior year. And now when you add up your net financial assets of five hundred and forty thousand plus sixty four million, you end up with an accumulated surplus of sixty five point one. And that accumulated surplus is broken up into, to a few categories. Your unrestricted surplus is at four point six million. So it was down two million from prior year, six point six. When it comes to your restricted surplus, your operating surplus there, you had increased your general reserve up to three point three million from one point four. So really a movement from unrestricted into restricted. Your capital then increased by about fifty thousand to four point eight from four point eight three in the prior year. And then your equity and tangible capital assets, that one decreased by one point six million to fifty two point three million from fifty three point eight. And then your overall accumulated surplus decreased by the same amount, one point six billion, sixty five point one versus sixty six point eight. So you see a decrease in your overall accumulated surplus, but mainly that's caused by your equity and tangible capital assets, which is tied up into your capital additions, as well as a new debenture that was taken in relation to that. So the next page of your financial statements, page six, after looking at the statement of financial position is your statement of operations. So at the top there, you'll see your operating revenue. So this is the revenue that the municipality generated in the year in order to provide services or operating services. You see your net municipal property taxes is up to seven point four million from six point three. So overall, you had an average rate increase in the year, twelve point five percent. You saw a small decrease in your assessment of one percent. And as well as the, the additional amounts or the, 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 sorry, the increase was seventeen percent overall, but the, went over year over year. The difference in the rest of the change was caused by the decrease of the Parks Canada requisitions. So that caused the net municipal property taxes increase to seven point four million from six point three. User fees and sales of goods, up to six billion from five point one. So additional recreation revenue in the year, as well as sewer revenue increasing year over year. So saw an increase there. Government transfers for operating were down to two point nine million from five point eight. In the prior year, the municipality has spent three million of their most funding from the province of Alberta on operations. That's why you see a large decrease in your government transfers for operating. All other items are pretty consistent, fines, licenses and permits. You did see an increase there to three hundred thousand from one seventy two. You had ninety thousand dollars of new income generator for your new parking revenue in relation to the hotspot program. So that's, that's where you see the increase in that. And then as well as in your penalties and costs on taxes, up to a hundred and eleven thousand sixty eight. The prior year, you had levied your, your penalties in September versus July first in twenty twenty, whereas in twenty twenty one, you went back in accordance with your bylaws and regis- and levy the penalty in July. So that caused the, the increase there to one eleven sixty eight the prior year, leaving you with a total revenue of eighteen point one million versus nineteen the prior year. So a nine hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar decrease or five percent decrease. And then from budget, you had about eight hundred and thirteen thousand more than what you had budgeted for, or a five percent increase there. This next chart here, this pie chart here gets you a breakdown of, of, of your revenue. So taxes make up forty one percent, user fees make up thirty four percent, and then your government transfers for operating make up sixteen. In the prior year, because you had that three million from the most grant, your taxes actually made up thirty three percent last year. User fees were twenty seven percent last year. And then grant funding actually made thirty percent of the, of the total operating revenue. So a bit of a switch this year in the allocation of, of that revenue. So after looking at operating revenue, your next line items are your expenses by function here. So because you don't budget for amortization, we had taken that out so you can get a better comparison of where your actual budgeted amounts were when it comes to your, your departments, without seeing amortization there. So you'll see for utilities, four point nine million actual versus the four point one million dollar budget. So there is seven hundred thousand dollars in sanitation work done on the wastewater treatment plant for repairs that is recorded in, in there as actual. So that's where you see the increase there versus what's in budget. Parks and Recreation was a three point five versus four point one. Other changes, Protective Services was up to one point eight million from prior years, one point five. You had additional bylaw costs and staffing in there, which caused an increase. Other, other changes in relation to current year to prior year, a lot of that had to do in relation to additional salary or FTE from, from prior years. So that left you a total cost of seventeen point six versus sixteen point one or a one point five million dollar increase from prior year, nine percent. And then when it comes to comparing to your budgets, I mean, you're off by thirty eight thousand when it comes to your budget to actual there. So very, very close in, in that regard. This next chart, if you, kind of shows you where your budget was in relation to your actuals. So the actual being the blue bar, the light blue being prior year, and then the line being the budget. So the line is above every category or right on each category, except for the utilities in relation to the work done on the sanitary wastewater treatment plant repairs, which a thousand dollar actual versus a budgeted line item there. After looking at the expenses by department, expenses by object, so what the money was, was spent on, you'll see your salaries, wages and benefits were up to eight point six million from seven point six, and right online with what you had budgeted for. Contract and General Services were up to five point six from five million. That's where you see the increase in that wastewater treatment plant expense. Materials, goods and supplies were at two point nine. And then your amortization expense at two point eight million versus prior year's two point seven. Other changes, a small increase in your provision for allowance of a hundred and forty two thousand from one oh seven. And as well as transfers to local boards of a hundred and fifteen thousand. You had given forty five thousand to Jasper Library and forty nine thousand to Jasper Yellowhead Historical Society. So that caused the increase from the current year to prior year, which left you with total expenses of a twenty point four million versus eighteen point nine, or sorry, one point five million dollar increase there, eight percent. And then the budget really made up the, or the budgeted amount to actual the differences tied up in the amortization being a two point eight million. So after looking at operating revenues of eighteen million and then expenses of twenty point four, you end up with a deficit in the year of two point four million, of which two point eight million is amortization expense. After looking at that, you have other incomes. So this relates to government transfers for capital of seven hundred and seventy thousand. These are grants that were used in order to fund capital projects, so MSI, MSP funding there. And then if you look, after you add up your other income, you ended up with an annual deficit in the year of one point six million versus prior year's annual surplus of two point four. So the reason last year you would have had a surplus in relation is in relation to your government transfers for capital, where you had spent two point three million on capital projects, as well as in relation to your most funding, which was made up three million of your total operating additional revenue, which was used then, which then more or less offset the amortization expense of two point seven the prior year. So that's why you see a switch this year. So after you take your annual deficit, you apply that to your initial accumulated surplus amount of sixty six point eight million, if it's sixty five point one in the prior year. And then within the financial statements as well at the back, there's a note on the budget. So when you prepare your budget for the year, you usually, you budget for, for a zero balance. So these financial statements don't reflect the same budgeting process that's done. So within that note, you take the annual surplus or deficit from the statement of operations. You then perform an add-back or deduction in relation to what you had budgeted for. So you'll see that, that budgeted to transfer from reserves eight million, you actually transferred to reserves one point nine million. Your principal repayment on debt was scheduled to be eight hundred and fifty four thousand, as well as your acquisition of tangible capital assets of twelve point five, which would then end to a net budget of zero. So when you look at the actual column, the one point six million deficit, you add back your amortization at two point eight. You then add also the issuance of the new long-term debt. And then the transfer to reserve, which actually reduces that amount by one point nine million, that's you a seven million dollar increase. And then deduct your actual debt repayment, and then your actual acquisitions of TCA lets you with result of operations as budgeted of one point seven million dollar deficit. Now, if the transfer to reserves doesn't occur at one point nine, then you end up at a two hundred thousand dollar operating budget year over year. So with that said, in relation to Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards, you have an annual deficit in the year of one point six million. Your net financial asset position is at five hundred and forty thousand. So that's the amount of cash will be left over if the municipality were to pay off all of its liabilities at that date. Also have an audit findings report, but in summary, there were no significant control deficiencies, no unusual accounting policies or estimates. There were some unrecorded misstatements. And then in relation to significant difficulties, I'll talk about that then. And I just wanted to thank management and staff for their help and support and, and helping us complete our work, completing our audits. And if anybody has any questions at this time, I can definitely, definitely take them, thanks.
Cailhian, give them.
Yeah, manager, another question. I certainly want to thank Ted for his presentation and, and just in terms of process. Council have an opportunity to ask questions of the auditor in a public forum, both financial statements or any information to see there. And then the next set would be just a brief in camera, where council have an opportunity to meet with the auditor directly. Administration would leave the room, certainly soonly. And then that way you ask any questions that might be of importance to staff. So just in terms of process, opportunity for public questions about financial statements. You'll also know that on our agenda, and set number one is Ms. Almanchuk presenting the audit of financial statements and that recommendation council received them. So this is the opportunity to ask questions of our national auditor. You'll have an opportunity to do that both in the public forum and a brief in camera afterwards, as you can ask for the performance of the administration. And then after that, one more presentation.
Any questions in the public forum?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Watcher. If I may, I have sort of a series of questions. I could begin to, thank you, sir, for your report. Very thoroughly, I believe with, with all of your findings at the end, it sounds like things are relatively good order. I do have a few questions. Pages aren't numbered, I think I'm on page five of the report that's before council. Taxes and grants in place of taxes receivable is the page that I am looking at. You've got that page?
Yeah. I think so.
And just looking at, again, at the increase in tax arrears and you, when you spoke, you identified it primarily that's attributed to one taxpayer. I assume that the municipality of Jasper is not the only municipality in which you might perform an audit. Can you say without revealing any confidence is whether that is something that other municipalities are experiencing, just given the, the economic conditions nationally and globally, that is a, a rise in tax arrears?
Uh, yeah, definitely over the Yeah, definitely over the last few years, it has been a very increase, big increase in that area. Mainly when it comes to actually the larger or the the counties, more the rural based. Municipalities, a lot of, you know, companies that receive but that pay linear taxes. On the property being used. You know, there's definitely been an increase in that over the years, a lot larger when it comes to allowances. One of the benefits, you know, that Jasper would have is that, you know, these properties are in demand. You know, usually there's a building associated with that land, there's tangible value there. That if taxes aren't paid, there's there's an asset that can can recover those, so. It hasn't been, it's definitely been, it's definitely hit more of the the larger rules that have the linear assessment. The towns have hasn't been been too bad, but definitely you do see a spike or an increase in your arrears taxes where. You know, businesses, individuals potentially have a harder time paying than they have in the past, so definitely seen more penalties on taxes for sure.
So it it's common and in fact Jasper's, even though it's seen an increase, we're probably better off than. A lot of communities that rely on linear assessment, for example.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah.
Thank you for that. On the on the very next page, receivables, I just had a question, allowance for doubtful accounts and when you spoke, you mentioned something about. I thought CN, but. I didn't clearly understand what you were saying about that that increase in allowance for doubtful accounts.
Yeah, in the prior year, we had expected to receive some money from CN Rail in relation to a right of way. So I think right right now at this time, there's some uncertainty on whether that amount will be collected or not, so we have set up an allowance in order to. I guess to, you know, assume that it's maybe not not going to be collectible, it's about seventy three thousand, so that caused the increase in that in that allowance from current year to prior year. Relation to that other revenue.
Thank you for that. If you could flip along a few pages to the page headed long term debt. About that page?
Yep.
You've indicated the debenture debt, there's. Six different items there, all with different interest rates. Can you confirm whether those are fixed rates or variable rates?
They're all fixed rates on the the debentures, so anything taken from the province of Alberta or Alberta Capital Finance Authority, it used to be called, they're all set on a fixed term. Repayment schedule, so those are all fixed.
Interesting to note that the best rate applies to the least amount of money. Two percent from.
Yeah, from the federal. I think that one's more of an operating loan, I think it's in it's in relation to that affordable housing project there, so working there, but yeah.
Second last question, I think on the page headed debt limits. Our debt limit and the service on debt limit have both decreased marginally. Can you just explain? Why that is the case?
Yeah, so. The reason your amount of debt limit unused as. Has decreases in relation to the new six point two million dollar debenture that you had taken on in the year. The total debt limit decreased to twenty seven million from twenty eight because your operating revenue decreased, so. In prior year, your your operating revenue. On your financial statements was nineteen million, where this year it went down to eighteen million. So it does correlate or it is in relation to that, so it's one point five times that total number there. Yeah, so hopefully, and then the the service on the debt limit is how much of the total debt you have to be repaid next year, interest plus principal. So as you take on more debt, that amount will will increase your service on debt amount as your repayment terms in relation to to the debt you have.
Thank you for that, I just asked a public clarification and basically our debt limit depends on what we spent in previous year, so. The more you spend, the more you can borrow.
Well, the more revenue you generate for operations, the more you can borrow, yeah. Because they want, they they got to make sure you can service your debt and repay it, so. You know, if you're only if you only have ten million dollars in operating revenue, you can't. You can't take out twenty million dollars in debt because you. You know, based on the, you know, parameters or calculations, you know, the municipal affairs, it feels that you wouldn't be able to repay that amount of debt. You can't ask for, you know, to go over your limit, you can request that, I've seen people do that, but yeah, that's how that. Is that's why that calculation is there is in order to make sure you can service and and repay your debt in the future.
Thank you for that, one final question, you mentioned during your presentation that. We do not budget for amortization. Is that a common practice with municipalities to not budget for amortization?
Um, that's a, well, it's a tricky. I find it's common when we're maybe comparing yourselves to similar sized municipalities, so other other towns throughout the province, and the reason that is is. It's very hard to generate additional tax revenue or user fee revenue in order to fund that that amortization expense. Where you will see amortization expense more or less. You know, funded is when you have a, you know, a lot of linear tax and you're, you know, you have a lot more. More cash available in order to potentially just fund the replacement of those assets in the future. I would recommend. Definitely, you know, definitely amortization represents the usage of your assets, so if you, you know, the best one is if you buy a grader for three hundred grand, it's going to last you five years. If you're able to fund that amortization over five years, you you will then have the money in order to replace that grader for three hundred thousand after it's done. So, you know, relying on grants all the time to replace all your assets, I think is definitely not going to be. Not as common as it was in the past and definitely be less common going forward when it comes to programs, so. I do recommend looking at that or at least setting aside money every year for replacement, you know, maybe, you know, budgeting two point eight million is obviously a lot, lot of additional money to 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 get. But definitely, you know, having some money or funding a portion of it for future replacement can definitely go a long way and make it sure that your assets stay current. And that you're not looking to, you know, wear everything down and have a bunch of old assets in ten fifteen years when you need a ton of replacements, so that would be just a thought.
Thank you very much and thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, those are all my questions.
Thank you, Councilor Wilson, and then and then.
A quick question about the debt limit. In comparison to other communities in Alberta. Are we above or below the average on how close communities are are. Getting to that, that, well, I guess it's an ever changing debt limit, but are we? Yeah, are we above or below average?
Um, I I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question specifically, but I do know that the municipal affairs does produce. Statistical reports, I don't know when they come out this year, where they actually compare yourselves as a municipality with similar ones and they'd be, you'd have. They'd have charts, you know, like population based on debt and they'd be able to give you those kind of statistics in those report, but one thing I will say is that. It is more common in urban municipalities that debentures are taken in order to, you know, to. To to do work within within the community, so you know, it I don't. You know, when you look at your debt limits, I'm sure, you know, there's probably quite a few municipalities similar size, you can look at that have. Debt as well in relation to to taking on or taking on to ventures in order to to add infrastructure to their community. From a from an urban setting for sure.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to Mr. Allison, thank you very much for the report. I'm sorry if you felt rushed to to get it in. Or to present it in and the time that was allotted, but I really appreciate the the thoroughness. I'm just wondering for clarity and maybe for the broader understanding. Under liabilities for deferred revenue, I was just wondering why deferred revenue and things like. You know, the capital building fund go under liabilities if it's, I mean, it's kind of already promised or something we have aside in holdings.
Yeah, so so the reason you see your deferred revenue as a as a liability is if you do not meet the obligation set out. Within the parameters of that funding agreement, that money is earmarked to be repaid back to the funder. So although, you know, you have received it or you will collect it and you have submitted a project that you're going to spend it on, if. That does not happen or you, you know, you don't meet the requirements and that money technically is to be to be repaid. Again, to the to the province or the specific funder, so that's why they're set up as the as a liability, so if you were to, you know, shut down at December thirty one, you would not. Complete those projects in the future, so in essence, out of cash would come nine million, that would then be repaid to the to the funder, so that's why those are earmarked as as liabilities. But then once they're spent, the liability obviously decreases, but also. Your cash decreases as well, so included in your twenty one million dollars of cash is nine million, that's earmarked for for future projects.
Thank you for that clarity, it definitely makes that helps make it a lot more insightful for me. And also going down, when we look at the the revenues from property tax, we had a surplus of one hundred and sixty five thousand. Does that attribute to difference in? Often evaluation?
Trying to figure. Are you looking at the seven point four million that you in tax revenue or?
Right.
Yeah?
Yeah, there's a difference of one hundred and sixty five thousand.
Oh, versus the the budgeted amount, okay, um. I I believe the budget difference was in relation to the requisition payments. Yeah, it's in relation to the planning reserve to Parks Canada amount, so it was initially budgeted at. Two hundred eleven thousand actually ended up being thirty five. So that left. Left more tax revenue for the for the municipality of Jasper there or part of the increase.
Yeah, that's great, thank you very much.
Yep.
Any further questions? Councilor Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to our guest, I think I'll refer to your page eight. Deferred Revenue are page fifteen. And I I want to go back to counsel, councillor Demota's question about the Canada Community Building Fund or the gas tax. If I have that right, so as of the end of the year, we had one point three million dollars. Of unrecognized revenue or deferred revenue and will receive additional revenue in twenty twenty two, correct?
That is correct, yeah, so there is an allotment for MSI and for the Canada Community Building Fund for the twenty twenty two year. So this is just in relation to your twenty twenty one allocation. Amount being reflected in the in the deferred portion there to be spent again on future capital projects for the municipality.
Okay, and I think we've committed a portion of that in our twenty twenty two budget, which you probably have not seen yet. But I just wanted to reconfirm that amount and what it was and the fact that there'll be in addition to that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions in the in the public forum? The nun would suddenly like to move the remove briefly in camera. Thank you, Councilor Demota, all in favor?
I'm members of administration, other than our reporting secretary will leave the room and I believe we're going to transition to a different Zoom room. I don't know if our presenter has to do anything to be able to enter into that, but administration will leave, will let Emma Pauls back after.
I did get a.
We we apologize for the delay in returning to the table. We move now to item five point three and I'll turn the. The mic over to CAO Given, who will provide an introduction.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Waxer, so today we have with us Benita Craig, who's with the Colliers Project Leaders. You'll see later on in our agenda, item seven point four, I believe, is a RFD from administration on the Jasper Community Housing Corporation Governance Review. As Craig and her team have conducted that review, it was presented to the Jasper Community Housing Corporation a couple of weeks ago and the. Board of JCHC recommended that this be presented to council. She presented information looking at both the housing situation in Jasper and some prediction of future need and demand. And essentially what our housing gap is and also some consideration of appropriate tools and models for JCHC to be able to address that housing gap. So I'm going to turn it over to Benita to make her presentation, that we all create for questions, and then again, as I said, this relates to the presentation RFP that's under item seven point four that will come up a little related to agenda. Give me a follow to you.
Thanks, good morning. Just double checking that it is still morning where everybody is. And that you can see the screen, yeah? Perfect, all right, thanks for having me. As Bill said, we've been working with the Housing Corporation and and with Bill directly. For a couple of months to help answer the question of. What should the JCHC look like in the future, what does it need to be? What is its role within the Jasper community? And the answers to those questions, we we kind of concluded would be. Embedded in understanding a bit more around what is the housing challenge in Jasper, there are very few municipalities in Canada that don't have. That very same challenge, it just differs in terms of size, scale and and complexity. So the work we did, I'll give a bit of a background, we'll talk about, as Bill said, the the size of the housing gap based on some. Order of magnitude, guesstimates, assumptions to start give, give us a sense of that size, complexity and nature. We'll talk then about the options to solve that housing gap and that's what we describe as the delivery model, so for. A municipality, there's different ways structurally that they might choose to go about addressing shortages in housing. And then we'll we'll get into what that means therefore for the JCHC. If at any point you've got questions, feel free to interject and ask. So quickly in the background, it's probably not news to anybody in council here that there is a recognized housing shortage, particularly for affordable housing in Jasper. And we know, given the nature of the community, I mean, that's a problem no matter where you live in Canada, but in Jasper and particularly. That does limit the economic development and the sustainability of the community, probably more importantly, in terms of people being able to live and work and afford. Life and living in Jasper. We know it's a strategic priority for the municipality, for council and staff. The Housing Corporation, for those of you that don't know, was first established in two thousand and seven in response to these very challenges, so they're they're not new. And we know that back in two thousand and nine, MPL Place was developed and that development agreement included a twenty year commitment to affordability. We, as I mentioned, have been brought in to look at how can we go about expanding and improving the supply of affordable housing and what. How do you make that happen through the JCHC or other pseudo government bodies? So in short, we looked at what's the kind of current state housing gap, what might it be in future? What are some of the options to get there, what are those delivery model solutions and then what does it mean for the right delivery vehicle? Size of the housing gap. And of course, I'm sure you'll you'll get access to this material, I'll go through probably quicker than it might take for all of the numbers to settle in in the math, but again, ask questions as I go. So we broke our view of the the Jasper population into two general groups, and I know it's not that simple, but it was the best way to come up again with an indication of the size of the housing gap and those. again with an indication of the size of the housing gap. And those two groups, the first is the seasonal population. And we define the seasonal population as those that are are living in Jasper for shorter periods of time. We know it could be anybody who comes for a year or two to work or even just for a summer to be a lifeguard, for example. And so we we came up with a way of estimating the seasonal population. And we used a similar uh projection to forecast out twenty years to twenty forty two to give an indication of what that seasonal population might look like in future. You'll see how that comes to play in a moment. So then we wanted to know, okay, for the seasonal population, what's the housing gap? Because the need for seasonal isn't the same as long term permanent residence. And this is where some of the calculations do get a little bit more confusing, but we looked at what's the seasonal population? And we used the job fulfillment rate. So looking at job boards and the rate at which seasonal type jobs are unoccupied. And we kind of assumed, well, that the main reason that these, excuse me, job vacancies exist is because there is an easy access to housing and that if there was, those jobs would likely be filled. So we use the job fulfillment rate, or rather, the vacancy rate as an indication of shortage for seasonal housing. So you can see that the seasonal population housing supply was really just a function of then the seasonal population with housing, because we then had figured out estimate of that number by the average household size. And we gave an indication of that seasonal housing demand, again, the total seasonal population. If if those jobs were filled again by the average household size, which then gave us that population housing, the seasonal population housing gap. So we did assume, um you you know, see again, the the makeup of seasonal workers is not necessarily the same as long term permanent residents and that the average household size in Jasper is two point three people per dwelling. But that seasonal workers, you know, um the service industry staff might be more that don't have families necessarily yet. Um might be more inclined to live in higher density housing. And so that's what you can see on the left there. The average household size going up to five. And we thought, well, it's more likely that seasonal workers would share dwellings. And therefore, the current seasonal housing gap is about a hundred and in future could double. Now, the future projections, I wouldn't, you know, I'd take with a grain of salt. There's lots that could affect that Jasper's way of growing is pretty unique. Um so we're really going forward, focusing mostly on the the near term gap. So that's the seasonal part. Next, we want to talk about what we describe as the year round population. So we ended up using the tax rule data to give an indication of the number of dwellings that are available to what we concluded to be the seasonal population. And then made an estimate between the or or an assumption between the population and the dwellings available based on the average density of two point three people per home to come up with that year round gap. So again, for twenty twenty one, the year round gap for the the year round population housing gap is seventy eight. I'll talk more about the note at the bottom um in a moment, but Parks Canada does have through the development process or development approval process currently a hundred and forty four units that are projected to come onto the market within five years. And we assumed in this number here, the two hundred and four in future, that those would come online. So if we put those two pieces of the puzzle together, the seasonal population and the total, the year round population and the variations you can see in these rows are just the assumptions around how many people would live in a home has a big effect uh for the seasonal population. So you can see if we assume that um in our seasonal population, it is five people per dwelling. You can see the size of the gap currently in twenty twenty one is a hundred and seventy seven units, thereabouts, and in future it could be up to four hundred. Whereas if you assumed that the seasonal population had typical um occupancy density of two point three people, it's a much higher number. So we show that just to flag the importance of of that assumption in in our analysis. We do know, um in twenty eleven, um the Community Sustainability Plan identified within the area, a number of locations, there are combination of developing lands that weren't yet released by Parks Canada, infill opportunities or redeveloping exists of existing housing. Anywhere between five hundred and forty six and about just shy of eight hundred housing units that could be available. So that was as of two thousand and eleven. We don't know uh how many of those have come online. We don't think they all have, but we don't know how many have come online. It does give a good indication though of, it kind of says, well, if we know that, I'll jump back aside. The size of our our problem, if you will, is about um anywhere right now between a hundred and seventy seven and four hundred and four. About a decade ago, we said there was potential to develop between five hundred and forty and just under eight hundred units that there are places where these units could come to be, kind of the takeaway here. So if we summarize this whole story about what is the size of our housing gap in twenty twenty one, it's that hundred and seventy seven. And again, that's assuming a seasonal population household density of five people per unit. However, I did make reference to those one hundred and forty four units that Parks Canada currently has approval for. And if we assume that those come online in the next five years, then we could subtract that from the hundred and seventy seven, which materially reduces your near term gap to about thirty three units. And similarly, as Jasper grows and assuming we meet that near term gap, um then the future need could be upwards of two hundred. It is of course assumed that most of this gap is for affordable housing. So important to note that none of this is a kind of a a detailed science, but it was an important exercise to give us an indication of the size of the challenge that we're looking at. You can imagine that if uh the work had showed that Jasper was short hundreds, you know, five, six, seven hundred units, the role that the municipality or that the housing corporation might want to play in solving it might look a bit different than the numbers we're looking at here. So again, it gives an indication of the size of the challenge and what's the the right fit and approach of solution to address the challenge. Which takes us to delivery models for the near term gap. So again, we're gonna focus on that smaller number to start, because that is uh a more realistic picture of what is in the short term. So when we talk about delivery models, there is a spectrum uh from fully public led to fully privately led. And when we have those variations of private and public in the middle of the spectrum, we're not talking about P threes, as you might be familiar with. That is, public private partnerships. In the large infrastructure context, we're just talking about where capital is coming from and the sharing of risk and influence. So on a fully public led model, you can imagine that would be fully financed by public um entity. Um that obviously brings with it, whoever is financing it, um carries the risk and requires the capital. But equally in the green, you can see down here, that's what then gets you that control of affordability and of design decisions. And as you move to the other end of the spectrum, or if it's a fully private model, which is kind of saying, let the market do its thing. There's very little financial risk and capital for Jasper that's required, but you have very little control of affordability and design because it's a fully private led model. So that's kind of the spectrum that we're gonna explore, but with a focus on those that are gonna be most relevant for solving this, the Jasper specific challenge. So the fully public model, in this case, Jasper would fund and develop housing to meet that housing gap. It, of course, requires significant upfront capital. You can leverage um existing municipal assets to be more credit worthy. It does mean, though, obviously, if you've ever led any large capital projects, whether for it's a community center or public housing, um there is development risk associated with that, even when you contract that out to people who might build and operate. It does for the municipality not being um a large staff contingent, require kind of owner capability and capacity to oversee that kind of development initiative. And last but not least, it's emboldened there. Ultimately, when you build um housing like this, you're making assumptions about rates of occupancy to create revenue to then offset any debt service costs or capital costs that you you put in to build it. And of course, you usually want to wish make sure you're at least breaking even. And so under this model, there's no guarantee that the units would be occupied. Our our numbers certainly suggest there is demand, that there's still a fundamental risk. And so that financial risk does lie with Jasper. The next two models are just kind of slight inversions of one another. So in this one, it's the idea that the public um or or Jasper, the J C H C, make the investment and fund and develop the housing. But you engage the private sector to guarantee occupancy. So the risk that I mentioned previously, you look to the private sector to take on. And so they you secure some form of long term contract with Jasper J C H C to then kind of pass that risk on of vacancy, say, look, we know that in order to run your businesses, you need housing for your staff, for example. Therefore, you have invested stake in seeing this housing come online. Would you be willing to assure occupancy and guarantee that you will have staff that will occupy these units? The cracks of this and how the financial model will shake out, you know, the appeal of that is gonna come down to the negotiated rental rate. And we'll talk more about that in a moment. But in effect, that that affects how much financial risk is there, because the private sector might say, absolutely, I'll guarantee so long as they can get, you know, a three bedroom unit for two hundred bucks a month. That's obviously not viable. But where we end up falling on that spectrum of negotiations will affect how much risk sits where. This next model moving along the spectrum is pretty well the same thing that I've just described, but as Bill put it, when we're working through this, you're flipping the piece. In this case, the private sector would lead on the investment side, so they'd fund and develop it, they'd lead that part. But Jasper would guarantee occupancy. So Jasper or the J C H C would assure it through a contract with private partners to take on that vacancy risk from the private partner. So this might be a suitable model if the public sector body or Jasper in this case didn't see clear lines or routes to accessing the capital that would be required and would need that to come from the private market and one of the private marketer to lead the development, but you still wanted to. And in order to attract that, you assure occupancy. As with the other version, though, the real risk and how much sits for either party is gonna depend on the negotiated rental rate. I won't spend long on this one. It's kind of just the idea of let the market do its thing and that's not happening and there's still a housing gap um as far as we can tell. So uh we won't go into any more detail, but pretty straightforward, but this would entail in a private led model. So now, having looked at those four models across the spectrum, we did a very kind of simplistic picture of how they they rate um for a couple key criteria across the top there. The idea of how much capital is required. Uh or sorry, the availability of it, they all will assume it's the same project across the board. Where the development risk sits, if you've been, again, ever run a large construction project, it comes with risk. Risk to affordability refers to ultimately, um the 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 shortage that Jasper is facing is in affordable housing. And it would be real and it would be unfortunate if a wonderful new housing development went up, but it turned out to be wildly unaffordable. So you'd want to make sure that however this problem got solved, uh ensures to some extent a level of affordability. And then lastly, debt service risk refers to who is carrying, kind of who's holding the bag for making sure that whatever bank ends up um financing this, uh who who is responsible for those debt service payments and carries that risk. So we're gonna focus on the this row here, the public and private guarantee. Where, yes, it does mean the capital's coming from Jasper. And yes, it does mean that they are holding development contracts, even if they hire a housing developer. But it does give you that low risk to affordability, because you're ultimately kind of setting up the financial models and the deals to make this happen. And you're only carrying moderate debt service risk because you're in a slightly more um uh more favorable negotiation position as the development owner to then dictate the uh rental rate terms with a private sector that would be providing the guarantee. Again, ultimately, it's gonna be determined by what that number is, and we'll talk about that at the end. Now, I mentioned when I introduced that summary table that it's simplistic, and that's because there's a lot of questions that kind of sit behind how you might rate it, whether red uh amber or green. I am still gonna focus on these middle two, because we've concluded that they seem to be the ones that are gonna be the most appropriate model should Jasper choose to go ahead with a housing solving the housing problem through a development project. So again, if we look at that public private guarantee, the questions to think about are is there capital available? This will only work if Jasper has roots to capital through some way, shape or form, because you can't develop a project like this if you don't have either assets that you can leverage or access to debentures or otherwise, which we know Jasper does. The next is J C H C or Jasper willing to take on development risk. Uh there's some municipalities that just have no interest and rather the market do its thing. Risk to affordability, it's the idea that is Jasper willing to either raise the capital or um secure a financing vehicle to take on the development risk to ensure affordability? It's kind of, are you willing to do both of these red things in order to assure affordability? Because those are the primary means to do it. And then lastly, debt service risk, it's willingness to enter into a long term occupancy agreement with the private sector in hopes of transferring that risk to the private sector as it relates to occupancy and debt service. So when we looked, we kind of said, great, that paints a nice picture. Those are some questions. We discussed those with the J C H C, had a had a bit of um kind of food for thought, but there were a couple prevailing notions. And the first was that um the best place for the capital to come from for affordable housing is is as long as it's available, is usually the public sector, whether through its uh financing authorities, given the lower interest rates particularly relevant right now, or debentures or otherwise. Um they are far more appropriate vehicles when the end use of that capital is for civic assets. The next kind of notion was that the best place for holding development risk is the private sector. Most municipalities would agree that they're not in the business of being developers. And last but not least, the best placed, the best kind of stakeholder to hold that occupancy risk is the private sector. They're ultimately the ones that are running the businesses, that are hiring the staff that are needing this housing. And so the the growth and the demand for this housing is in large part coming from these local businesses. And so they're the ones that are best positioned to say, I guarantee that I will have um people that need this housing. So if we think of those three notions, it became um we settled on a conclusion that option two, the idea of a publicly led investment, because it's the best place for the capital to come from. Um with private sector occupancy guarantee made the most sense. Because the public would could still develop the project, but you know, they're not great to hold the development risk. So let's make sure that you use private enterprise for a fee, very, you know, as you do with any construction project. Um you transfer the risk um by through a construction contract or development contract. Given that this is a a relatively small number of units, you know, you might think differently about your role in development if, again, we're talking about hundreds and it might make sense to become proficient and carry that risk as a as a public entity, but this is a relatively small number of units that could be transferred to private sector to develop. And then lastly, that the private sector provide that occupancy guarantee. So that's what option two set out. I'll go back here. That's this one here, the public private guarantee. Before I go into putting more numbers in front of you, any questions so far? Okay. We wanted to test our thinking about all of this and say, let's make it real. Because, you know, a- as you probably observed, the cracks of this private sector guaranteeing occupancy and their willingness to do this is pro- and the need for affordability is really probably gonna hinge on the actual numbers. So we did um a very high level, what I would call pro forma, to try and model out what this would look like financially and kind of do an informal testing. So what you're seeing here is some of the assumptions we used in that model, that the typical units that we're looking for is two to four bedroom. It would be a mix of them. Um we assumed about thirty five. We assumed a development cost of fifteen point seven million, and that was, we piggybacked off the Connet um development proposal and plans and costing and just adjusted it for scale to this one, adjusted for inflation. Um we assumed certain borrowing rates within. We assumed certain borrowing rates within the model, and we also assumed a monthly rent of about 1,800. That was rather informally checked, and again, Jasper now has a version of this that Bill can Bill and team can fiddle with and adjust the numbers if you want to kind of test out what it would look like if market rent was higher or lower, for example. We assumed 1% vacancy. You can never have a building completely full. And then we had certain assumptions around what it costs to own and operate the building and the capital maintenance that's required when you run a a unit. Because again, at a minimum, if Jasper is going to say finances through debentures or otherwise, you'd want to make sure that the revenue coming in through rents cover at a minimum any debt service costs as well as your operational costs, you know, cleaning the gutters and capital maintenance, replacing the door handles every 15 years or whatever it might be. So what you can see here, disregard this, these labels at the top, but we'll, I'll take you to the the key message of this big table of numbers. And that is that the cash flow that you have coming in with those occupancy rates I described is about 450,000. Down here is where you can fiddle with the proportions of contribution in the capital. So again, we're talking about strictly a public model with private sector contributor, so with private sector occupancy guarantee, no capital contribution. And so this is the cash flow you'd have before debt service costs. And in this model that we were talking about, public-led with private occupancy guarantee, you've got, excuse me, the same cash flow after, because there's no private sector contribution. You take out the debt service costs and you can see a net cash flow of 321,000 a year. So you'd be in order to provide 35 two-to-four-bedroom units at this development cost and charging a monthly rent of 1,800. Annually, you are in the red. Now, all of this can be adjusted, including things like if you're able to find partners that do want to make capital contributions. Perhaps, you know, whether it says grant monies or otherwise. So, you know, CMHC offers grant money. There may be other civic entities that have capital because they need housing and are prepared to make a, you know, a gift-like contribution of a couple million. Any of that could be modeled in here to offset the total costs. It does, though, beg the question then, at what rental rate does the model break even? I showed you earlier, we assumed 1,800. If, so you can see what we vary here on the left is the rental rate. We haven't changed the interest rate of the financing. It's at 3,075, so not quite double the market rent, but not far from it. So the the insight that we gleaned from this test with the assumptions as we had it was that the private sector would need to guarantee 100% occupancy at $3,075 a month for 35 units in order to avoid any annual deficit for Jasper. And there's lots of assumptions in the model that came there. But, you know, I I mentioned where the financial risk sits depends on the rental rate. This kind of shows you what that tipping point is. Any questions based on the numbers before we get into what that can mean for JCHC?
A lot of this is based on, of course, the 15.7 million. Can you just reiterate where the 15.7 million price tag kind of came about?
Yeah, so the Connet Housing Project, I believe, had 40 or 60 units in it. I have to go back and look at the financial model. But we used that total capital cost, and it excluded, there were marginal land costs, which we would assume be the same because it was, you know, it's an affordable housing development. And it was for more units, so we prorated to a per-unit cost. And it was also for smaller units. So then we prorated to adjust for, well, we're talking three-to-four-bedroom units here because we know that a lot of the demand is, would be for shared housing and then families. So we adjusted and kind of adjusted the Connet housing number to fit the type of units and the number of units that the current affordable housing gap showed to be for the 35.
Just one further question about that. The, do you have like an approximate or average square foot size of the units? I'm just trying, you know, doing my math, trying to break down on like
Cost per foot basis, yeah. I don't in front of me, but I can certainly get that and let you know. I'd have to go back and look at what the Jasper one is and see how much we, or sorry, what the Connet one was and how much it would have increased. Yeah, they're not enormous, but yes, we can easily get you that.
The other thing that I would add to that is just that the caution council about, I mean, there are numbers that are down to the, you know, 3,075 dollars sound very specific. This is financial modeling, even in terms of the cost of construction, as council is aware, cost of construction can change from conception to actual build, inflation, all other sort of factors. So these really are illustrations. And so to illustrate what it would take based on these numbers, as Benita said, they have provided us with a very flexible tool that we could use to model different scenarios because we know that there may be low-cost capital in the community that would be interested in securing housing and increasing number of units, and we can account for that. And so before we get into too much detail on the, you know, question like the cost per square foot per construction, we should do our best to keep it at a high level. Say, if we spent about 15 million dollars and all these other assumptions
Yeah.
were included, then this is the risk that would need to be charged. We can change those assumptions, change those models, and we don't know that it would be 15 million dollars to build a building. I mean, we'd have to, if there were any decisions to go forward on considering anything, then it'd be a whole other process to do an actual analysis of what a proposed construction cost would be. And even then, we wouldn't know until we put it out to market for for bids to find out what the market would actually cost that. So just that caution, that the intent here is to do an illustration of what the housing gap is. And based on some informed assumptions, but there are still assumptions, what it might look like, you know, to go down that model. So many, many steps to come after this. But what we're really looking at is those core assumptions of how many people do we likely need to house in the future? And if we agree with those assumptions about how many people we may need to house, what are the best approaches to doing that? And that's where Benita gets to that spectrum of, well, did we just wait for the private sector to solve that? Looked like that's happened in Jasper. Do we have the money to do it independently ourselves? Probably not. Probably leading to something in between. And so I think those two things about what's the right approach to addressing the gap? And what is the gap or really the the major highlights of the information that Benita's presenting?
Yeah, the, I would certainly echo everything that Bill has said in that the the purpose of the model was in large part out of curiosity to really test, based on some informed, but very, you know, some significant assumptions. What, and it's a, it's kind of like a macroeconomic view, or rather, microeconomic, given the size of municipality, view of market rental rates of housing and what it costs in the current market to deliver affordable housing. So it kind of gives you a size of the difference between. And it just goes to show why affordable housing is often subsidized in some way, shape, or form. You know, when you look at what it costs to build something, and then you look at what market rates are and what it costs to borrow the money to build something, it just kind of helps paint that picture that, you know, affordable housing doesn't just build itself and does take public intervention and investment. Probably not a surprise to any of you, but, you know, the numbers help paint that picture, I think. Okay, so that, once we got a kind of a size of the the problem, the challenge, the housing challenge, did some testing of the the financials. We wanted to paint a picture of how this could be delivered and done. You know, what kind of governance, what kind of organization would be best fit to manage the risk in the process of proceeding with addressing the housing gap. So again, this is framed up under the model of a public-led investment with a private sector occupancy guarantee and describes the role of a housing corporation for Jasper. In this case, it would hold the contracts with the local businesses that are providing that public sector guarantee. As Bill alluded to, there may be additional forms of contract that aren't just about occupancy guarantees, but also perhaps include capital contributions. We'll talk more about that in a minute. While also holding a contract with a developer, the person who had actually planned, designed, and built this kind of project. It does require someone either with the municipality or JCHC to act as owner and manage and oversee the process. The operations of a housing asset could be run by JCHC. You could have a staff member hired into that housing corporation that does it. Or alongside the existing municipal assets, the two homes that are owned by the municipality, or it could be outsourced to a management company. And lastly, something that I think JCHC has already been doing anyways, and that's kind of advocacy and tracking of the housing gap and any proposals for future gaps, because as we said, this is strictly right now talking about what we know to be for near term. What's shown at the bottom is a really simple visual illustration of where some of those contractual relationships exist. We know the municipality, obviously, in its relationship with the residents. The housing corporation being arm's length. And in this model, would hold those kind of three contracts at minimum, a private sector guarantee and developer-operator contract that would do potentially the design, building, maintaining, and operating with affordable housing. I know it also potentially own and manage the municipal staff housing and the residents that are occupant. Where it shows again, so all of those pieces could be shaped in any way you want according to market interest. I won't go into this one in any more detail, but we'll take you to kind of where we've gotten to now. We, in conversation with the JCHC, and our view is, as I mentioned, that that public-led, assuming the the capital is their model, makes the most sense. But but to try and secure potentially both capital contributions from the private sector and an occupancy guarantee. And on the note of capital contributions from the private sector, you can see item six, their JCHC capacity to assume debt independent from Jasper. Obviously, to do this, the JCHC currently, in its current legal structure, is affected by the debt ceiling imposed for the municipality. And this would be a significant loan amount, even with contributions from others. And so you'd want to try and find a way to separate those so that in balance with other municipal priorities, you don't necessarily, you're not constrained by the debt ceiling. And so that's something you'd want to explore. In doing so, there may be routes to being able to take capital contributions from other parties despite being a not-for-profit. And that's where if there were private businesses that wanted equity in it, that would be a route to explore. Of course, we would certainly advocate to continue and pursue external funding with CMHC or partners, as we've alluded to. And then, so I'm going all different order here, but that fifth one, the market sounding. There's a lot of assumptions within this, and we've certainly given the financial model tool to Bill and team so that they can use it to model as things progress, but there's certainly an exercise in engaging, if it's something that council wanted to go ahead with, but engaging with the private sector to assess out a lot of the assumptions that we've made here. Is there interest in perhaps capital contributions? Is there interest in providing this, these kinds of occupancy guarantees? What rental rates and how much are they financially prepared to contribute, either as occupancy guarantees or capital? And all of those become great inputs to then test against a model and inform the overall feasibility of going ahead. Any other questions? Bill, anything to add?
Then Jared, nothing to add from me. Benita, thanks for the presentation. Council, if you have any questions, obviously, as I said before, we'll be discussing a little bit more on the JCHC governance RFD that comes up later in the agenda. But Benita's here. If you have any questions about the data or the assumptions that she presented in the report, because they do form the foundation of the recommendation of administration.
Any questions?
Thank you, Depp, and we're extra through you to Benita, thank you for the report, and particularly for your attendance today. Certainly helped me better understand the document that I read on the agenda. I want to return, if I may, to identifying the housing gap. If we wind up optimistically with a gap of about 33, I would be happy beyond belief. It seems to me that that's that will prove to be less than what we need. But I I'm looking at page nine of your report, and I need your help interpreting what it is I'm reading. It seems to me that between 2016 and 2021, so over the course of five years, the dwellings available increased by a little over 400 units.
Let me just, let me just pull up the page that you're looking at. You said page three?
Page nine.
Page nine, sorry. Right. Okay, continue.
And so the gap, the gap reduced from 421 to 78, which shows, I think, substantial progress. But now we appear to be at a turning point. The estimate is that in the next 20 years, we will fall further behind than we are now, and there's only 144 units projected. And yet we've been achieving about 80 units per year. And I get that right now Parks Canada has perhaps an indication that there are development plans for 144 units. But is there any reason to discount the market forces that have prevailed for the last five years that have produced 80 units, but still 80 units annually, but still leaves us with a gap? I'm just trying to follow the assumptions that are being made here.
So to make sure I understand your your question correctly, that the market forces are producing and I I am looking at page nine, and I'm not seeing where you're referring because I want to make sure I'm
Well, I think it's page nine, it's page 39 of 140 in my agenda.
Oh, right. Oh, no. Okay.
But it seems to be page nine of your report.
Like the number nine is at the bottom of the page?
It's at the top, actually. Call yours project leaders nine.
What, what, just that I'm sure, because I don't know which one would have been circulated to this group, and I want to make sure I am looking at the right number.
I'm looking at a page that said an estimated population and housing gap for year-round population.
Okay, I'm looking at a word report, a much lengthier document that we submitted for Bill. You're talking about the presentation that I just did. Gotcha. I was looking at the, okay. So we're on, literally on the same page now. And your your comment is about the rate, the number of dwellings available according to tax rule between 2016 and 2021, and the number that were delivered presumably by market sector forces, and why we couldn't assume that those will continue at that rate going forward, correct?
Correct. And if not at that rate, that's somewhere.
So I I think that's a realistic assumption. At this point, we just, given the relationship between Parks Canada's authority for development, we went by what they know to have approved with 144. Because any future development has to be approved by them, whether it's redevelopment or otherwise. And so we kind of said, well, that's, we could say, and more that might come, but though they, they look, that was on their five-year projection.
And of those 400-plus units that have been added in the last five years, some of those, I think, will have been from the co-op model, where there was where there was, at least in some cases, a municipal loan guarantee, but no other commitment. How would that fit into the private-public, public-private models that you have identified? Where the municipality simply gives a loan guarantee, but is not otherwise involved in a project, as has been the case for a number of projects that have seen the development of co-op housing?
So that would be the, I would describe that as the private-led model, where you're offering, it's not a loan guarantee, but it's a form of guarantee that reduces the financial risk to a private developer. I would say that's viable option, so long as you can find someone who wants to do that.
Okay. And the last question, if I may. On the page where you talked about private sector funds and develops the housing, so sort of option four of that continuum, you indicated when you were speaking that that is not happening. But I take it what you mean, it's not happening to develop affordable housing. It might be
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And the one, the one point I'll add, and again, it'll to your previous question about where I said it could happen if you offer a loan guarantee. Depending on the structure of a co-op model, you'd have to, so you'd want to bake into it long-term affordability requirements, obviously. And co-ops kind of inherently do that usually in those membership agreements. But like an MPL place model, for example, does not. You know, they, I think, have seven years, and it's not a co-op, but it was built as an affordable housing solution, and it's got seven years left of affordability, and then it can go to market rates. So you just want to be careful with something that is, where you don't have as much financial control to make sure that whatever vehicle you choose, you still have some assurances of long-term affordability. And a co-op would be appropriate for that, certainly.
Thank you for all of that.
Other questions? It looks like not. Thank you so much for a very thorough and complex report.
Yes, it's a lot for a Tuesday morning. So thanks for your patience. And feel free to reach out if you do have any other questions. I certainly wouldn't expect that it all makes sense on first, second, or even third read. So happy to be a resource if you're looking to understand a bit more through Bill or otherwise. Thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming.
Bye.
I believe we now move on to department reports. But we have none today. And 7.1, financial, audited financial statements.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I know Ms. Malinchuk is on the line. I'll just provide brief introductory comments. This is a follow-up from the presentation from the auditor. And this is administration's recommendation that leads to a piece of annual business that we have to do every year, and that is council formally adopting and approving audited financial statements. So Ms. Malinchuk is here to be able to guide council through the RFD and questions that you may have. Natasha, over to you.
Good morning, council. Yes, as stated by Mr. Gibbon, today administration is asking that committee recommends to council to accept and approve the audited financial statements as presented for the year ending December 31st, 2021. As you saw earlier today, Metrix Group presented our statements, and those are also attached to this report. So you can see those after the following pages that we're going to go over. As just some general highlights on the request for decision, the municipality must submit required financial statements to the MGA, Municipal Government, by May 1st every year. So this year, just as a little bit of a highlight to let council and public know, we were, we had to ask for an extension, and that was due to us consolidating to the West Yell Head Regional Waste Management Authority financial statements. They were not prepared to the date required, therefore it set us back a little bit. But that was granted. In looking over the financial statements, you can see that the overall financial position of the municipality as presented for the year end is positive and reflects council and administration's ongoing focus on prudent financial management. Council should be aware, and I often will communicate this, that the formatting that the audited financial statements presents is often different and is different from what administration presents to council and to the public. Administration tries to present more on a variance level by usually quarterly, and will focus on more transparency and readability for council and the general public to understand the position that the municipality is at that current time. While the audited financial statements varies from the annual financials, while the audited financial statements varies from the audited formatting, there are some underlying information and financial impacts that are different in the reporting. So as you see during the year, there is a treatment of amortization, and that is reported at the end of the year. And Mr. Allison spoke about this quite a bit in the presentation that he gave to council today. The financial statements include non-cash adjustments, and that is for the amortization. And the amount that you see is amortized in the 2021 is $2.8 million. You see that on the consolidated statement of change in net financial assets. This amortization expense is not currently funded in the municipal budget and therefore does not appear in the administrative reporting. Without the addition of this non-cash expense, municipality would realize a surplus of 1.18 million for the 2021 year. So that's an important aspect to look at when looking at the financial statements. It is something that is not currently budgeted. And if council wished to support or fund the amortization going forward, then that's definitely something that can be discussed during the budget season. And then there's also the inclusion of the landfill liability that is not reported in any of the administration reporting that you see during the year. The municipality of Jasper is 25% share of the West Yell Head Regional Waste Management Authority. And in the past, it has not been consolidated in the statements. However, this year, there has been a correction applied retroactively, and the 2020 comparative figures have been restated to the 2021 financial statements. As you are aware, the financial implications, there's no direct financial implications. However, this is really an important process in presenting our year-end as trends are noted. And it's very important for council in the annual budget deliberations going forward, as well as deciding on service levels and mechanisms to fund the activities that are undertaken and delivered by the municipality. The financial statements are also used in external reporting. So two examples, our provincial reporting requirements and allows comparatives to other municipalities. Financial analysis. So in this, you will also see a long-term debt. There is a net increase of 5.447, and it's mainly a result of the debt incurred to fund capital projects in 2021, less the regular scheduled debt payments. The long-term debt of 12 million and some change is within the provincially legislated debt limit of the 27 million. Tangible capital assets has seen a net increase of 3.8 million in 2021, and the acquisition of TCA was 6.6 million, is mainly due to development of parcels G A and B, road resurfacing, replacement of fleet vehicles, and the beginning of the recreation complex renovation, to name a few, plus the proceeds on any kind of disposals that we had in 2021, and also less amortization that you saw and we spoke about earlier, the 2.8 million, and the disposals of a small amount of 2,500. And just to follow up, as I'm sure everyone is well aware, on the municipality of Jasper's website, after the financial statements are approved and accepted by council, then they, then are then posted on the municipal website for viewing by all. And I think we have up to 10 years at the moment that are posted on the website. And that is then followed by the consolidated financial statements, the full report. And you can see that this is all, and Mr. Allison already went through the highlights of the financial statements as included. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Malinchuk. Other questions?
Mayor Ireland. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to Mr. Gibbon, perhaps, or Ms. Malinchuk. In order to close the loop from earlier today, is it necessary or advisable that we also make the recommendation to council that it accept the audit report presented this morning by Mr. Allison for information?
Your worship, I think that'd be appropriate. If council didn't do that earlier, it would be fine to do it now. I think the piece of this that we need to formally do is get council adoption of the audited financial statements. Of the yes, absolutely, acknowledging the auditor's presentation.
If I may, then Deputy Mayor Waxer, I will make a motion that committee recommend council accept the audit report presented earlier today by Mr. Allison on behalf of Metrix Group as information, and that committee recommend council accept and approve the audited financial statements of the municipality of Jasper as presented for the year ended December 31st, 2021.
Any debate? Call the question then. All in favor? Miss Carrie. I was about to say, thank you, Director Malinchuk, but she's gone. Okay, we'll move on then to 7.2, assessment review board appointments.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer. You still have an opportunity to say thanks to Director Malinchuk, because she's liked to hear from this one as well. I suggest that this might be an opportunity to finish this item, and then council can consider your lunch break. And Ms. Malinchuk, if you finish all of the items of business. But this is a portion of our involvement in the regional body of the Assessment Review Board for West Yell Head. And Ms. Malinchuk has a report that it advised required appointments to that body. I'll turn it over to the Director of Finance Administration.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gibbon. So this report is coming to council to ask council to recommend committee, or sorry, the committee recommend council to appoint Tricia Popke as a designated clerk to the Regional Assessment Review Board for the West Yell Head, for West Yell Head, in a one-year term, starting July 1st. And that committee recommend council appoint Paul Butler as designated chair for the Regional Assessment Board, also starting July 1st for a one-year term. Again, we had already spoke about this just recently, about the Assessment Review Board and its bylaw. So it was just brought to council not too long ago, I'd say within the past month, month and a half. And basically with this, the municipality of Jasper is a member of the Regional Assessment Review Board, and along with the town of Hinton, the town of Edson, and the ID 12 Improvement District 12. Each community must pass a bylaw, which we've already done, to establish the regional board and become part of it. So then, as per this bylaw, each council must appoint their own board members. So two or more per municipality, and their own municipal board clerk. So this is, as we come forward today, councils are, is asked to also jointly appoint a designated chair and the designated clerk for the Regional Assessment Review Board, as it's outlined in the recommendation above. The intent of the regional board is to have rotating communities providing a designated chair and clerk. Paul Butler is a resident of Jasper, and Tricia Popke is a resident of Edson, who also works for the town of Edson. So this would be then coming back to council for decision on the next meeting, which would be June 21st. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Director Malinchuk? Counselor Wilson.
Sorry, I may have misheard, but so Tricia Popke is from Edson, and Paul Butler is from Jasper. Was there a requirement to have two representatives from each community? Or opt-in?
Yes, it's two or more. Deputy Waxer, through to Counselor Wilson. Two or more.
Who's our second from Jasper?
Oh, I see. That question is, it we also have Michelle DeShin that is on the board, and sorry. And she is currently appointed as a board clerk. There's also two others that are not mentioned in here, with their names. Val Glaves, I believe, and the other name is, sorry, it is leaving me at the moment. Stephen Eldred. Thank you. Sorry.
And I think, Counselor Wilson, you're also the council appointment to the board. So that if there was a need to fill that, Stephen, we're obviously well-covered by the names Ms. Malinchuk mentioned in yours. People sitting on the Assessment Review Board, I believe, has some required training. I know that Mr. Butler has that required training from his time on council previously. We may want to think about ensuring, and the public members that Director Malinchuk identified have that as well. Maybe something that we'd want to consider, ensuring that you have over the course of this term. So that if there's come to need to call, call you to serve on that, that you have that in place.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to Mr. Jackson. I take it really, this is not, although it might be misconstrued as an appointment of Mr. Butler to the board, it is the appointment of Mr. Butler as a board member to the role of designated chair. Is that why this is here?
Your worship, that's correct. That, so there are two things that are happening here. This is essentially the rotation of the designated clerk position is moving away from the municipality of Jasper, where we had had a staff member serving the board in that way, and moving over to over to the town of Edson. And so that would be Ms. Popke. And then Mr. Butler was already on the board. It is the, all of the members of the board making this appointment to him for him to serve as the chair in the chair capacity.
Any further questions? Counselor Wilson.
Uh, I would make the recommendation, uh, that committee recommended council. Like Tricia Popke is the designated clerk for the Regional Assessment Review Board for West Yellowhead for one-year term. Started July 1st, uh, 2022, and that committee recommended council. Appoint Paul Butler as the designated chair for the Regional Assessment Review Board for West Yellowhead for one, for one-year terms, started July 1st.
Any debate? I'll call the question then, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Malincheck, for your uh, explanations. Then we'll move to 7.3. Or are we doing to a lunch? Counselor D'Amore?
Can't speak for the rest of the council, but I think I appreciate at least having that.
Is that fine with everyone else?
If I may, if we're going to break, half an hour is just about not sufficient, 45 minutes, maybe we can go back at 1:00.
Okay, is that fine with everyone else? Okay. So a motion to no more, we'll just hit a recess and be back at the table at 1:00 o'clock. Thank you. Good afternoon. We'll we'll resume the meeting and. Move to the next item on the agenda. Which is the Emergency Services Building Boiler Replacement. Uh, Cao Given, would you like to speak to this?
Uh, I'll just provide a brief introduction. I believe Director Nadon is likely online as well to speak to it as the. It's in her area of responsibility, um, but this is essentially a request for an amendment to the budget. Uh, direct recognize the actual cost of the project. Um, and Director Nadon will guide council through the details. Uh, there's also a recommendation to award the project to get it underway. So I'll pass over to Director Nadon.
Welcome, Director Nadon.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. Um, as Mr. Given introduced, we are here to uh, request an amendment to the budget for the. Uh, replacement of the boilers and the domestic hot water system at the Emergency Services Building. Um, this project has been on our list for a few years. It is a carry forward, so it will be familiar to some of you. It was approved for 2022 with a budget of $150,000. And um, we did have an estimate provided by WSB following a HVAC assessment of the building. And we thought we had enough with 150, but then when we went to uh, request for quotations, so went to market. Um, you have the detail in the report, but the the quotations came in between 165 and $241,000. And um. The detail is also provided under discussion, but we are requesting uh, for council or for committee to recommend to council. To update the project budget to 190,000 uh, for that project and as Mr. Given outlined. Um, to award the contract to a specific company as outlined in the request. This is uh, at the discretion of the Cao, requests under 500,000 can be. Uh, approved by council and Mr. Given wished to bring that forward, so that's why that second recommendation is there. And um, I'd like to thank Mr. Hutton, who's our Facilities and Asset Manager, uh, Mrs. Malincheck, as well as our Fire Chief Matthew Conti, who. Uh, brought this item forward in my absence. I'm here to speak to it today and take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions in council? Counselor Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer and uh, either through you to Mr. Given or to. Director Nadon, just reading about an ongoing problem here with the boilers. Um, will this solution. Correct that problem, or is there significant other issues within the building over and above the uh, the boilers and the hot water tank?
I can take this one. Thank you for the question, Counselor Melnick. Um, I think we've also provided in the report, um, we tend to think of the Emergency Services Building as one of our newer buildings, which it is. But it is now 20 years old, which means uh, some of the systems, including the the heating systems. Are due to be replaced, but I also gather from. Mr. Hutton, that we've had some difficulties with the system that is currently in place, so we've had. Uh, pretty much every plumber in town tried to repair it and we can't get parts, we can't get service from the company. Um, between the heat ventilation and air conditioning assessment that was conducted in 2021. And uh, the quotations we received for the project, we do think this will. Fix the problem as in get us equipment that is serviceable and and up to current. Uh, technology in terms of boiler and domestic hot water. And um. Yeah, it is, the the system was appropriately sized before, so we're proposing a replacement that is very similar, but with equipment that actually functions. Is is what I get from our our maintenance department should yield some some energy efficiencies and just better service for the building. Um, but yes, so we do believe that the current proposal will fix the problem.
And just for the clarification, these would be low-pressure boilers. Or high-efficiency low-pressure boilers, I would assume.
I'm afraid I may be the wrong person to answer that question. I do not have backup from uh, Mr. Hutton. I do have the detail of the quotes that were received. But I haven't reviewed uh, the quotes myself. Mr. Hutton and Mr. Conti did so, um, so I'm afraid I can't answer that question.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to Ms. Nadon. Although this item was part of the 2022 capital budget. I presume that the request in the budget process for 2022 was based on. The capital expense request form that's attached to the request, which is a. October 2020 request. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, your worship, uh, through Deputy Mayor Waxer, this is a a project that's been on the books since 2020. And um, it was approved with. The amount of 150 was based on uh, the WSB assessment that we got in 2021, so we had some confidence going into the 2022 budget that that. Amount would be sufficient. However, when we came back with the request for quotations, um, as detailed in the report. All of them were over 10%, were more than 10% over the budget. Um, and we do think this is due to economic conditions, but yes, this is a project that has been carried forward since 2020, hence why we're trying to. Uh, advance it and get it completed in 2022.
Right, and so the increase, which I calculated 26% is not. A 26% increase from sometime earlier this year, it's it's almost now. Um, a year and a half, approaching two years old.
I would have to confirm what we went with in 2020. Like I said, the 150 is based on a WSB assessment that was conducted in 2021. So whether the 2020 request and the one that was approved by council at the time was at 150 or lower, I am uncertain. However, um, there are, there is funding in there for uh, upgrade to the electrical that needs to take place, so other. Parts of the project that I don't, I'm not sure how much detail uh, was in the initial proposal, but the 190 does not cover. Only the boiler and the hot water systems, which uh, that contract alone is for 177, but upgrades to the electrical and. Uh, paying for part of the HVAC study is is why the budget is coming in at 190 as our current proposal.
Cao Given?
Uh, thanks very much Deputy Mayor Waxer, Deputy Mayor Waxer, uh, to his worship's question, yes. You know, the $150,000 estimate that would have shown up in the budget would have received council approval. Um, would have been developed prior to October 29th of 2020, where you could see that that was the date on that capital request form. Um, so that would have informed the 2020 uh, budget, sorry, the 2021 budget the council reviewed. Um, but of course, that estimation of the cost of this project would have been based on numbers that were developed much earlier. Uh, so yes, you're absolutely seeing not just a couple of months of inflation and change in market conditions, you're seeing the effect of a couple of years. Of inflation changes in market prices, um, and that's really the driver of the cost of this.
Thank you for that, and just one additional question, I may take it that the. The additional funds, assuming the council approves, are going to come from. Protective Services Restricted Reserves, but we don't otherwise need to do any adjustment to. The 2022 capital budget overall. We can just get this with you?
Your worship, that's correct. Um, administration will identify the appropriate funding source, which is covered in the report. Um, it is available to Protective Services Restricted Reserves, as mentioned. Um, administration, administration will apply that, doesn't need council direction to apply that funding source. But we do need council direction to amend the overall budget for this increase.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. My question, I guess, is more for clarity for myself, since I feel like this is the first time this has even come at. That's in my term. Is that what reserves are for and how much is in that accounts and is this how we usually adjust these things?
So uh, Deputy Mayor Waxer, for Council Hall, I don't have at hand uh, the full amount of the Protective Services Restrictive Reserve Director Nadon may. Um, but you would have, you may remember from the capital budget discussion, that there are a number of different areas where we identified items as being funded from reserve. Um, and that was a funding source, you can see the capital budget. This is an example of that in action, essentially. Um, so council uh, approved many capital projects that were funded from this either this source or similar source from a different court.
Any further questions? Counselor Wilson.
If there are no further questions, I would make the recommendation that committee recommend council uh, approve and update project budget of 190,000. For replacement of the boiler and domestic hot water system, replacement of the Emergency Services Building, and that's to be funded from the Protective Services Restricted Reserves. And as well, that committee recommend council award the Emergency Services Boiler Replacement Contract for Magical Mechanical Systems. Limited in the amount of 177,470.
Any debate? Any any debate? I'll call the question then, all in favor? Motion carries. I apologize.
Oh, no, no, it was carried, but just before um, we leave the topic, I wonder whether I I might um. Just make a request. If there is support from council, in the background part of the. The report, the request for decision. There's a reference in in the middle of the first paragraph, says in accordance with the new internal fiscal controls and reporting policy, B109. I assume that it is possible for our staff. When they make a reference like that, to put it in that blue link fashion, so that. When counselors are reading the agenda, if they want to refer to that particular document, it's um, readily accessible, so I would just. As an observation, I I would have found that when I was reading this agenda to a good. Just a a small request that it can be. Easily manipulated by a. Highly technologically advanced staff.
Do we need a motion for that or no?
No, Deputy Mayor Waxer, we certainly can do that. I think um, we are, we're still working on the consistency that we represent the force to council. Uh, another way that we could do this is to have the relevant legislation section, uh, which we would list policies, bylaws that are relevant for the decision that we're recommending. Um, and when we do that, we can certainly provide a link, um, which might make a little bit more sense than having it sort of in line in the middle of the paragraph. But in either case, uh, our highly technically advanced staff.
Very much appreciated, thank you. I believe that we now move on to the JCHC Governance Review. Uh, Cao Given, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, absolutely, Deputy Mayor Waxer, so um. As council just received the presentation from Colliers with respect to this topic, and and so you and obviously the public that would be watching, council, you're well versed on the topic. Um, so I may not dive into quite the level of detail that uh, Ms. Craig did uh, with her presentation. Uh, but you see in front of you essentially three recommendations. The first, that committee recommend council receive the review for information. And establish 687 units of Jasper's 2021 Housing Gap. Uh, that the committee direct administration to identify the resources required to produce a strategy to address the 2021 Housing Gap. And that committee direct administration to review corporate structures that enable JCHC to assume debt independent of the municipality. Also being able to provide some manner of equity in return for capital contributions. Um, so those are the recommendations in the report. Maybe we'll spend a bit more time about the why would administration recommend those things. I will say that uh, the JCHC Board has initiated a strategic planning process towards the end of last term. That led to um, the Board at January 27th meeting adopting this strategic plan. That really set the stage for the work with Colliers, um, to essentially say, okay, so. Um, how, what is Jasper's housing challenge and what are the best ways to tackle it? And that is the governance review that you represented with earlier today. And the full details are attached to this report, I'll just say to that. Um, Ms. Craig's presentation was a presentation and summary of the full detail that's taken in the report, if you're looking to really dig in or change a little bit. Um, but as you saw, uh, we can. Uh, identify Jasper's housing gap based on a number of metrics. Uh, the approach that Colliers took was to look at employment data and say, how many people are needed in Jasper? For our businesses to be functioning at full capacity. How many, you know, what is the demand for employees? And what is the gap between positions that are filled or not? And then there is an assumption baked in there that. A part of the reason that some of those positions wouldn't be fulfilled is because there is housing available to go with them. But in addition to that uh, employment data, I think there's also an acknowledged and recognized gap for um, general housing. Uh, Colliers put them into categories of seasonal housing and full-time residents. Um, and just to be clear for council, maybe the idea of seasonal is not seasonal for six months, it is. Uh, seasonal or limited time for under five years. Uh, in the community, where the full-time residence is the idea that there is something that would be seeking to currently relocate to Jasper for a longer period. And I think that this is. Pretty well recognized out in the community, that there is a need for staff that may change over more frequently. Um, in maybe entry-level positions, particularly in the hospitality sector, and then there's also a need for uh, other types of positions, uh, professionals or other types of work. Um, where we are, we as a community are looking to recruit people to live in Jasper for a longer period of time. Uh, we, as the report shows, there's a deficit of housing available for both groups, um, and uh. It doesn't necessarily account specifically for people that are currently in Jasper in either of those categories and are not housed. Uh, adequately or appropriately as they might wish to be. So just to acknowledge, there's also a bit of an uncalculated. Existing demand within the community of people who might appreciate having different housing options available to them. Uh, so the reports um. Focused on the housing gap, um, and presented three different versions of that um, for council and JCHC's consideration. The report identified a housing gap of 177 units in 2021, um, for both. Uh, combining both that that seasonal or more limited term need and the full-time need. Um, that gap of 177 is at a occupancy of five persons per unit. So essentially, um, a very high density, and I think. Uh, administration's recommendation of establishing a housing gap that is higher, that is. Uh, 687 units is a recognition that not all of the people. 687 units, is a recognition that not all of the people that we would wish to serve, either currently in Jasper, but we might wish to attract to Jasper, would be comfortable living at that high density. Not every that we're going to get to come to Jasper is going to be comfortable living at a five persons per dwelling unit sort of density. So administration is recommending, and the JCHC board reviewed and supported the concept, a more modest number of persons per unit at three. And that's why the housing gap is larger than that, that lower number of 177 that you saw in the presentation. Maybe I'll pause there and just ask if there's any discussion or questions around the establishment of the housing gap, because it really is a foundational question. Once we know the size and scale of the problem, then, and if we agree on that, we can establish what that is. We have a target that we can aim at, a goal that we can attempt to achieve. The second part of the discussion will become about methods of trying to tackle that challenge. So maybe I'll pause on this housing gap question and ask if there are any questions.
Although it is, it has been in the past appeared as a problem, I want to look at it as an opportunity, a big opportunity for some. This is, I think you have to look at it positively. Yeah, and even at that three per unit, it does seem kind of high if you've ever lived in those types of conditions. So have it. It's still not as desirable, but more desirable than five, I'm sure.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Waxer, I would agree with, with Council demo, both in his characterization of there's a great opportunity that's in front of the community here. If we establish the scale of opportunity or the challenge that we're looking to do, addressing it really means a great opportunity to benefit current residents of Jasper and provide better housing, more appropriate housing, and to support the growth of the community by having more housing options available. So it certainly is an opportunity. I would also agree that that number of three may be still fairly high, but you know, the average, you know, and again, this averages, you probably sort of heard over the years, you know, the average number of residents per dwelling across Canada is 2.3. I, you know, never known any family that had a 0.3 in a person in their family. But based on averages, that's, you know, a right. And that's why administration recognized that it would make sense for Jasper to be slightly higher than the national average in terms of overall population density per housing unit, but probably not to the level of five. And it's been backed up just by anecdotal discussions in industry that there may have been a time in the past where employees coming to Jasper for work may have been comfortable in very high-density settings. And I'm sure all of you as long as Jasper probably have some sort of knowledge of the types of conditions that people might have been comfortable with in the past. At least anecdotally, employers have shared with me that they're having a hard time attracting employees to come and work in those, you know, and live in those kind of conditions today. And so that's why administration felt confident that, while we should be on the higher end of the national averages in terms of residents per dwelling unit, five is likely too high. And so if we aim for that, saying, well, let's build staff home that's going to fit five people per unit, we would likely be missing the mark of what, what people need and what they're indicating, that they're, you know, the willingness to come to Jasper to work.
And you'll take the opportunity to speak to that. And I think if you offer very high-density housing, I think it leads to other community problems. And from my perspective, I think if we offer respectful housing, then people will in turn be respectful to the community and that, and we may see people having, we may see less turnover in staff. If people are happy in their homes, they're, I think, it's better for the community as a whole.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, if there were any other questions on the housing gap?
I was, I snuck it in before I asked if there's more question. Mayor Island.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I'm struggling a bit with the utility of establishing the gap, so we could easily accept the report as information. The report gives optionality as to how you calculate the gap. And 687 is one of the numbers that could be used. But it could be a variety of options, some of which might have more or some might have fewer people per unit. I'm sorry. I don't know whether we achieve anything significant by taking one number of the range and saying, that's the target, rather than simply accepting the report and accepting that there are different ways to, to approach the gap, whatever it is. So I just wonder whether it's a real need to identify this as a fixed number for any other purpose, including potentially discussions with third parties who might provide funding or something else. Do we actually have to have a target number or can we simply accept that it's a bit of a floating target and it depends how we approach it?
Deputy Mayor Waxer, to speak to that, I think there is utility in establishing a target. Because it does allow both administration to have a, an outcome that we're looking to achieve that's more specific. It is, I think, well understood certainly by administration and well identified in the report, that that number of 687, you know, is dependent and may reflect a blend. We do hear from funders and other third parties that they would like to understand, you know, well, how many do you need? How many housing units do you need? And this would be the most recent information, I think, over the years. Jasper certainly would take the housing need analysis. And we did attempt to use all of those previous reviews to establish this number. But having a target does allow us to establish strategies to, after the target, if it is, if it is broad. If maybe a challenge, you know, if council said, no, we are, we are, we think that the most appropriate solution would be one person per dwelling, then the number of units that we need to build is significantly different than if we're doing five persons per dwelling. You know, and so as you can appreciate, that starts to have influence. It starts to impact the style of design that you might go to, which would impact your cost of construction and so on and so on. So establishing a, an agreement about the scale of the challenge and the middle-of-the-road population density as a target really tells administration and I think the community that we're looking for a bit of a blended solution that may include some elements that are higher density, and it may also include some that are lower. But if council took either end of that spectrum, then our solutions that we would present and potentially the tools that we would need to address those desired outcomes would be different. So it is about narrowing the scope so that administration can provide better and more specific advice as we go down the path.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Could we establish a number based on number of beds we need? As opposed to units and then?
Well, Deputy Mayor Waxer, I appreciate that when we're talking about staff accommodation, the number of beds is, I think, a well-understood and historically-used measure here. I think the idea of population density gives a little bit more latitude. You know, so my A family, you know, might live in a house that has more beds than the people. But, you know, although that's not necessarily common in Jasper, and certainly not common in staff accommodation, it might be appropriate for some portion of the population that we're trying to serve, where other portions of the population might be, you know, strictly down to beds, you know. So I think that's also part of the utility of establishing this blended population density of three per housing unit. So you may have some four or five-bedroom housing units. You may have some one-bedroom housing units, but overall, that blended population density of three, this is what the target would allow for a range of different solutions for different portions of the market or the population that we're trying to serve.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. In the report we received this morning, it said that there could be 144 units coming onboard for Jasper. Does 681 include those 144 or 681? Is what goes on?
The 687 doesn't include the prospect, doesn't include the assumption that those kind of 144 units would be constructed.
Mayor Island. Thank you again, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Through you to Mr. Given, and I'm not trying to engage in debate, but just understanding that 687 number is a combination of the estimate of the year-round population housing gap and the seasonal population housing gap. Does the year-round gap assume one person per unit? Or the seasonal one we see is configured as 2.33 or five people per unit? But the 78 that is identified housing gap for, for year-round is that? What assumption underlies that in terms of density?
Worship, through Deputy Mayor Waxer, your worship, I would need to review the report again to get down that, well, I'm sorry, don't have that at hand. And I'm sure given a moment or two, I would be able to find it.
Other questions? Would someone like to make a recommendation?
Deputy Mayor Waxer, we can maybe discuss a bit more of the other three sections that you're going to live this. Sorry, that was a pause on the, to discuss the housing gap number.
Right.
Something came up that I would like to answer, so. Shouldn't be ready for pausing any questions. And also, there's this, I will find that and sort of relate that back to council. I believe it's at the 2.3, but I want to confirm that for you. The other portions of the discussion that reflected recommendations are really around, okay, so if we assume that this is approximately our housing gap, recognizing it's a blended number, and there may be different solutions for different parts of the population in there. What is council's herd method of delivery? And this is where we get into that, that spectrum that, that Ms. Craig showed that runs from fully publicly advanced to fully privately advanced. And all of those are legitimate options. It would be legitimate for a council to say, the market will fix this. If there's a need, the market will bill to fulfill that need and and it will happen. And on the exact opposite end of the scale is, we need to do all this, let's get going tomorrow, because we have all the money that we need and we're ready to do it and take on all that risk. And there's probably something in between. And in fact, there are a couple, there's, I think, a spectrum of options that are in between. The recommended approach from JCHC, that the JCHC board has given me as their CEO there, is to explore a blended approach that sees the public sector take the lead, while partnering with the private sector to access capital occupancy guarantees or both. And so it is in the, it is that option two, which was sort of the second from the left on the spectrum, where the municipality would still have a significant amount of influence over ongoing affordability. A significant amount of influence over design, where we would engage with third parties or the private sector to secure capital. One observation I'll make about this is that I think Jasper's context may be significantly different from other communities. In the presentation where Ms. Craig showed a little, like, an example of the financial analysis of the performa, there's that one spreadsheet where it is scenario analysis. And in there, they make some assumptions about expected return on, on investment, which is typical, anybody that is putting up their capital, expects some kind of return. And in the performa, I think, based on what you would see in other communities and general sort of commercial expectations, they listed that the private sector would probably expect a 6% return on their investment, which would lead to how much the municipality or how much money would have to come in every year to be able to fund that expectation of return on investment. I have a sense, again, anecdotally, and then would need to be pointed out, that the private sector here may be more interested in seeing housing units built and developed. And that there would be greater benefit to them than the return on money. So that, so it's an example of how that, some of the assumptions in here, we need to check. But if we are a publicly-led development, we have the opportunity to test a variety of different solutions with the private sector. And I think there's some good partnership opportunities that are available in the community. And that's why the JCHC, I believe that's why the JCHC board recommended the option to approach of the delivery method, which is a publicly-led with private participation model. Again, I'll pause there to see if there's any discussion or questions about that.
Counselor, tell them.
True, Deputy Mayor Waxer, which was given. If we were publicly-led with private participation, would still be allowed to apply the grants?
I think the answer is yes. One of the significant challenges of going too far along the privately-led is that your access to, you know, some of the provincial federal programs for home housing may be restricted. There are obviously benefits, because then all the capital cost goes up across sector. The, the publicly-led does allow us to both potentially qualify for those provincial federal programs, but potentially more importantly, be publicly-led and having that ongoing assurance of future affordability will be a big portion of our ability to secure land at the low cost. So my understanding with parks candidate is that they, on behalf of all of us as Canadians, want to ensure that there is a fair return on the assets of the land municipality, which I would, as against the Canadian, I wouldn't expect anything less of them. And parks issue on a very good willingness to work with JCHC to support affordable housing if there is going to be ongoing benefit. So that's another reason why ensuring that there is strong public leadership allows us to legitimately make the case to JCHC that there will not be, they're not providing a direct commercial benefit or that the public interest would be undercut. And if they can have those kind of assurances, that would lead them to be able to provide us land at a low cost, which can affects the ultimate affordability.
Other questions? So I don't, furthermore, there's a bit more.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. So the final portion is really about the JCHC goal. And understanding how the JCHC can help support Jasper advancing its desire to earn housing. As it's currently structured, the JCHC is a not-for-profit corporation, which means that you can have members, but you cannot have investors. And it does limit the entity's ability to And it does limit the entity's ability to accept capital investments. There are other models that administration has researched that may offer more opportunities to act as a vehicle for capital contributions and that may allow JCHC to provide the private sector with what I believe we understand would be terrible to them to have some manner of equity to show that they have an asset on the books without necessarily giving them ownership of an individual unit, which might run afoul of the park's private interest insert. And so the JCHC board at a high level has directed administration to review alternative corporate structures that would enable JCHC to offer some manner of equity in return for capital contributions. The other challenge, as it exists right now with JCHC, is that as a not-for-profit entity, its debts would be fully reflected against the municipality's debt capacity. And so as you can see, there will be a fair deal of capital need. If we're good at securing grants or third-party investment, then that capital will go down. But I certainly can't imagine it going down to zero. And the municipality has other capital needs as well, competing for a limited capital debt capacity. There are models that allow the municipality to essentially own a private for-profit corporation and fully control that entity. And in most cases, the municipality has the choice of whether the debt would be integrated with the municipality's debt or whether it be borne by the corporation. Administration isn't ready to recommend that. That is the right approach. But the recommendation of the three here is that council should give administration direction to do further analysis on that and bring forward additional recommendations. Because it will allow the municipality to retain its debt capacity for things like water, wastewater systems, buildings and other things, other municipal infrastructure, while providing flexibility for the JCHC entity to undertake its own debt, which would would be supported through the operations of the facility through rents. So this is not a conference, administration is not seeking a confirmation from council that you're ready to go ahead with a model. What administration is proposing is that council does at least give us direction to explore that model. If council is not interested in that, you could alternatively consider the municipality to undertake that role of the housing vehicle and being responsible, or suggesting that there should be other entities that could just take on that role. Administration believes that there's a middle ground that meets that colorful matrix that Ms. Craig showed. We believe that there's a middle ground approach in there that reduces risk for the municipality, increases our fiscal capacity by moving potential debt from underneath the municipal umbrella and allows for additional private sector contribution, while still giving the municipality significant influence over the design of any facility as well as the ongoing benefit we don't deserve. So that's what recommendation of the three is, is seeking community's direction to administration to review structures that might be an alternative approach for JCHC. And ultimately, those would come back to committee and to the JCHC board for review and consideration before further steps.
Any questions? Councilor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I do see the need for us to move the corporation forward and to have an opportunity for the corporation to start seeking other ways to be able to finance and promote housing in the municipality. Speaking to recommendation number three, that would be a motion that I would be a recommendation that I would be willing to make so that we could move the corporation towards seeking other forms of structure so that we can then continue to move forward to see if there will be opportunities for us to partner with other capital or with other private industry as well as with that change in structure, be able to perhaps attract provincial or federal funding.
Counselor Wilson.
Just a question, Counselor Melnick. You focused on recommendation three, but would you not see the benefit in one and two as well? Just number one is really just establishing that we have six hundred and eighty-seven units at housing gap. So the reason we're moving forward on two and three would be because we've established that there is the housing gap. And that, I think, even to move forward on item three, we need to direct administration to to as well identify the resources that are required to produce a strategy. So we don't have the resources at this point amongst the board, or sorry, on the board. And I think we need to give the board, or sorry, give administration the the direction that we would entertain many more resources to move forward with number three. Long-winded, but my question was, did you want to leave intentionally leave one and two up?
Do you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, no, didn't want to intentionally leave it out. Whether it's six hundred and eighty-seven or five hundred and two, the number, we do know we have a gap. We currently have resources probably in the amount of forty thousand in this budget remaining for this year. So if we are going to direct administration to identify other resources near, they may be coming back to us for an increase in the budget, which would be fine as well. I am comfortable with making all three recommendations. But just for the purposes of moving forward, I think, you know, focusing on stepping out of the box and looking at another way of how we could move forward is really what I was focusing on, but I'm happy to do all three.
I'm not sure if that's yet a motion, but I'm just checking if there's any other questions. Or else we'll consider it a motion. Do you want to read them out? Or just as written?
Deputy Mayor, I could make the recommendations of all three for the purposes of the further discussion. So I would make the recommendation that committee recommend council receive CH sorry, JCHC governance review for information and establish six hundred and eighty-seven units as Jasper's twenty-twenty-one housing gap. And further, that council direct administration to identify the resources required to produce the strategy to address the twenty-twenty-one gap. And further, direct administration to review corporate structures that would enable the JCHC to assume debt independent of the municipality, while also being able to provide some manner of equity in return for capital contributions.
Any debate? You know, go to counsel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, for clarification. Recording purposes, Counselor Melnick, for number two, he said that council direct administration, and thank you.
Any other? Mayor Ivey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I appreciated where Counselor Melnick was attempting to take us a few minutes ago when he started with item three and I would like to take us back there and suggest that there be division of the question. I fully agree with Counselor Melnick with respect to the third recommendation. I still have some questions about one and two. So if we divide them, I think in fact we can move forward more quickly than with an all of us motion.
I would be happy if they're split into three separate motions and we could vote on all three. And that way, I think we'll be able to move forward.
Shall we proceed with the third first? Okay. The motion is direct administration to review corporate structures that would enable JCHC to assume debt independently of the municipality, while also being able to provide some manner of equity in return for capital contributions. Any debate? If not, I'll call question. All in favor? Motion carried. If we want to move opposite, then we go to two, or do you want to go one? Go to two. The committee that that committee direct administration identify the resources required, produce a strategy to address the twenty-twenty-one gap. Are there any questions, concerns? Mayor.
Speaking to the motion, I am uncomfortable the way it's worded, and it's not just the establishment of a fixed number as the twenty-twenty-one housing gap. I would be oh, I'm sorry. You went to two, not one. I can speak to you. Sorry, I read from the top. I just need to know what is encompassed in resources. Resources required to produce a strategy, does that mean staffing resources and financial resources or other resources such as continued discussions with all your school debt leaders? What is really intended by the use of that word?
See, yeah, goodness.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Yes, your worship ultimately comes down to money. Continuing conversation with any consultants is money. As you know, each hour of their time is essentially billed with municipality. Right now, in terms of resources within the organization that are focused on housing, the operational budget approved for the JCHC for twenty-twenty-two was just over seventy-two thousand dollars. Seventeen thousand of that is salary benefits for a point three position. So in terms of the total sum of resources that are available to address housing matters, that are dedicated towards housing matters, that's what we've got in twenty-twenty-two in terms of money. I think the exploration of the additional models is certainly possible within the currently budgeted funds. I think the development of a strategy to address any housing gap would take more detailed analysis and either more staff resources or more consultant resources. Administration isn't proposing by any means a blank check here, but we would like to at least get confirmation that council would like us to come back to you with a proposal of what either staff resources would look like or financial resources to support additional consulting work. This is likely to be something that would show up at twenty-twenty-three budget review that would happen this fall. And that could be something that would be referred to the twenty-twenty-three budget so that administration could give councils advice on. If we're looking to address the housing gap, then we should consider this amount of fiscal resources, whether those are in the form of dedicated staff members or whether they're in the form of additional consulting. So it really does come down to money. And administration is essentially asking council, would you like us to come to you with a recommendation on how much we should be investing in addressing our housing gap? Or council could say, no, we wish to do that within our current fiscal.
And if I mean, and would that include not only how much, but potentially at least the sources of that revenue? Or would simply be assumed to be taxation?
We would look at all potential sources of revenue to be able to support that. I think we would start with the one of the resources required to do the job, the expenditure side. Give council that advice and of course recommend how we might fund that expenditure. Yeah, so it would, along with all the rest of the budget, where we consider both revenue and expenditure, how we'd be giving advice on both.
Other questions? Counselor Wilson.
I'm sort of this motion, because we are allocating monies at this point. We don't have it in front of us as what is needed, what resources are needed. You know, there could be staff, there could be more money. Could be a number of things, but we need to identify first. I would hate to not approve this one in because we don't have the information in front of us. It's just, yeah, we're only directing administration to identify what we need to move forward and what resources we need to report and and build strategy from there.
Is it right that this is Counselor Melnick's motion still? If that is the case, and I think perhaps it is implicit, but I would offer as a friendly amendment, if Counselor Melnick will accept it, the wording of the motion and then just add the words and return to committee with a proposal prior to council budget discussions of the twenty-twenty-three budget. Because I think we have to put some on some council on this, not just the administration. And so if we can, I agree that we need to know what resources are required, but we need an obligation on ourselves to get on with this before budget discussions of this year.
I'm happy with that amendment and was probably going to go there myself just to encapsulate what Mr. Givens said and to be able to prepare for twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, with that, if there's no further questions, I'll call the question on number two. All those in favor? Motion carried on to number one. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I have a question about number one, and I apologize if I've missed something. Recommendation that we establish six hundred and eighty-seven units as a shortfall, and is that based on two point three people per unit?
That is through Deputy Mayor Waxer, that's based on three persons per unit. So you sort of a blend of the higher five and the lower two point three, that is on the lower end of the scale. It is based on three persons.
So then in, under housing gap number three, if we assume a higher than average number of persons per unit, five, the housing gap is one seventy-seven, and that only, the math is different. I'm just, I'm missing something, because one hundred and seventy-seven at five people is eight eighty-five. But six eighty-seven, I multiply by two point three is fifteen eighty, it's kind of a bit more. I know it's, we're not going by that, but I have a thing of like residents, just like sort of the family of four or five people that work in a hotel or what, I feel like I might have missed something. I'm sorry if I did.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, I would just go to the, in a detailed report that breaks it out. And I'm sorry, counsel, I will just, counsel, I'll find the page. Counselor Hall, sorry, Deputy Mayor Waxer, if there's any additional discussion that council want to have, we certainly can do that, and I will find the page to reference that.
Mayor Ivey. I was just going to support Counselor Hall. I tuned in now and I can maybe find the page that I used, but it 177 units at occupancy of five is 885. 687 units at three is 2,061. And 2.3 for a thousand, that means 74 units was 2,400 and something. So you're right, and I share that concern that are we looking to house people or are we looking to build units and maybe a combination, but depending on the scale we take, and surprisingly, the less dense we build it, the more people we accommodate. And so I I am challenged with that number of 687 as well. And I was using what appeared to be page 10 of the report that was on our agenda, Mr. Gibbons, page 40 of our electronic agenda.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I wonder if we could, you know, come up with a number of residents that need places to sleep or be a family, again, like I said, but maybe we decide that a certain percentage is families, a certain percent will be high density staff upon, there's some for retired residents and stuff. Or we do need to nail down the units?
Deputy Mayor Waxer, maybe just speak to that again. In terms of the the specific number, I guess, perhaps we're perhaps the 687 is just so specific that it is acting as a challenge to conversation rather than because it sounds like it's like a very specific thing rather than I think what administration was seeking is a council direction on. Do you want, do we want to go full out, high density? Or do we want to go low density or do we want to be somewhere? I think that's really the direction that we're looking for. I think the methodology in calculating the number or key number is complex and does have some some variation there because, you know, I think Jasper has complex housing. There's a variety of different types of populations that we're looking to serve. So so maybe the idea of establishing 687 is is not particularly productive. I mean, 687 is certainly one, some would be on higher and some would be lower. Maybe the appropriate approach would be to receive or adopt the governance review and housing gap analysis. Because then it would be all of the broad variety of options on the table, but it would also have council acknowledge that and formalize that. Yes, we we believe that these numbers are correct. The answer is somewhere in this region of options. I think the other thing that would be helpful is if councils gave some indication to administration of which end of the bits of the gap you want to be on. Just sort of that's the scale that we want to be on because it does, as I mentioned earlier, impact the types of solutions that we might that we might try to help. If it is five persons per household per unit, then that is physically probably very different really than if it was one person per unit, which, you know, there there may be a market for that as well. So I think those two things, one, council acknowledging this report and accepting the information and then giving administration some direction on the population densities that you would like us to identify solutions for.
Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I think like for me, the way I was looking at it is that 78 is a fixed number. And and the number associated with 78 was like four year round population and broken down. I think the ratio is different for the seasonal population. And those two need to be separated up from the way I was looking at it. Calculations done on the higher numbers with seasonal and then the 78 added on with a different calculation. So I haven't been able to to work it out, but I somewhat understand in my head that can
Councillor, have a hurry.
I think we need to look at a variety. Last week before, it's gone down maybe two years that we had from taller. It sounded like what we saw in Ben, where some units are smaller, some are bigger. And that complex is probably too big for here, but I think we have to look at variety of power. And I don't think I agree with Deputy Mayor Waxer, can we all have that? Now, we have families that we want to attract with, you know, coming for jobs that are looking for more of a condo style townhouse. And, you know, we have a lot of people here that work during their late holidays, holidays, with these single people. They don't want to live with other people. They want a like a small scale apartment. So I think it has to be a variety of.
Councillor Johnson.
Thank you again, and I might go back to when councillor Melnick was first on council. I I believe at that time, we did have a group out of Ontario that did work on various parcels. I forget the the actual name, but we do have we do have a study that did some work on the G A G B G C and provided a mix of different styles of housing and how it could work on those properties. It's somewhere in their files. I don't know exactly where it is, but it was very detailed and addressed the housing gap. I believe maybe about 10 years ago. But the the mix was relevant for the community, which I believe is still the same style of demand or type of that. Going back to what you talked about it now. When we did visit the two property, the property manager said that there's, you know, they kind of missed the the direction in the sense that two bedrooms for the for high density weren't as high as that. And on their eight frame properties where there's more valleys, the two bedrooms were a little bit more desirable on mass for what they need to fill in at the time. They thought the two bedrooms are going to be a higher than they weren't. So the studios and the white bedrooms seem to be more harder. So there's a lot of groundwork that was already done there that might be helpful.
Councillor Wilson.
Just to clarify, like nowhere here are we suggesting or doesn't suggest that you know, higher density housing is what we need to be doing or lower it. This is an average, it's an estimate on where do we think, you know, how big of this gap do you think it is? And they've used three, three different numbers of how many people in a household. So by using the middle ground, three, that 687, that turns out to be 687 units or units of shortfall, that is taken into account that there may be some solution where it's it's higher density and there may be some lower density solution. So like we're we're nowhere near deciding what type of housing is is going to be built. We used an average number, not the average, you know, across Canada average 2.3, we'd be going one, one unit, point seven even higher or point seven resident or individual higher to to have some tangible number so we can start at some point. And we have a number that we can now say, okay, there is bring you 687 as a as our starting point. And then we know that we go and say to possible investors, th- this is this, this is what we've identified as our shortfall in housing. And this is why we want you to invest with us, whatever us is, whatever it ends up being. But this is a a starting point that we can say, let's start knocking that down and then we can gauge ourselves from it. Like, okay, so we did put in 140 or whatever, and we can use that that starting number and as a checkpoint where we can say, okay, so five, 10 years from now, we have accomplished, you know, a certain amount of units and and are, you know, it's really just a good place to start from with that number of 687, but it it is an estimate, of course. And so we can sit here kind of saying, well, no, the the numbers weren't, they didn't really we were using units rather than people or or whatever, but I think we're getting stuck off on, yeah, it shouldn't be 687, why not 660? So we've got to start, but it's not the number they came up with with their calculations. And they put the, so anyway, I I think it would be beneficial to have a number to start from and and be able to know what we're we're working towards.
Yeah. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. In agreement with councillor Wilson, it is an estimate. My concern initially was both the number and the word established, but I do agree that it is an estimate. So yeah, I turn to councillor Melnick, whose motion it is and propose again for his consideration friendly amendment, but I I would be inclined to say that committee recommend council receive the Jasper Community Housing Corporation governance review for information. Acknowledge 687 units as reflective of the reasonable estimate of Jasper's 2021 housing gap. And I have an additional motion that I would make afterwards, but I won't pay off to this one. So just recognize that it's reflective of a reasonable number, but it's not absolute in any way. It leaves open, I think, lots of optionality to discuss densities as we move forward.
Yeah, comfortable with that.
CEO given.
But I appreciate the direction that that would take it. I think it still gives administration enough direction. This is how it started, though it sort of made it seem as though that was the number. So sort of appreciate that. And then whenever my program had been a little calculation on that housing gap, and it was that question of what is the total year round population number based on? I can speak to that after council has answered the question or prior.
If I might, just with respect to both friendly and then I I think it is important, having received this report, not only that we accept it, receive it for information, but we do acknowledge that there is a significant housing gap, and this is one way to calculate that. It's it's an estimate, but I think it's important that whatever we do today, we do acknowledge that the report is really valuable and gives us an opportunity to start to wrestle with the housing gap that we have always known is there. Now we're able to at least put some context around that. I think it's an important step for the community that council does make such an acknowledgement.
Would you like to speak to that first?
Well, it's Deputy Mayor Waxer certainly wants to speak to the motion of the friendly amendment, but I want to share there's a question about you know, how that, and appreciate that we're moving slightly away from saying that is the number, but there was a question about how it's calculated. So I can confirm that the year round population housing gap of 70 units is based on 2.3 people per unit. And that the seasonal population gap, of course, is on a three. Where a bit of the confusion might come from is that in that the 687 is the total housing gap with all units being at three persons per unit. So it just, it is, so if you added, if you added up the year round population housing gap of 70 units, 2.3 people, you get 179.4 people, you can house the most 70 units. And if the seasonal population housing gap, the three persons per unit of 609 units, that would be 1,807 for a total of 2,006, 2,006.4 people. First, 2,006. If you take the 687 multiplied by three, then you get 2,061. So there's a slight difference there because there's a blending of the numbers. Again, which I think is a perfect illustration of how the 687 is not precise. And I think that probably supports the intent of the friendly amendment to say, you know, to establish that that as an indication of the need that exists. But so just to clarify, yeah, no wonder the numbers are confusing because that 687 is at a straight line of three per, three per year.
Just wanted to clarify that if you got the event, okay. And I I guess I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. There.
I apologize. I thank you for calling on me yet again, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I did indicate that I'm interested in in an additional direction, I think. And I take this perhaps wrongly from the report that we received this morning, because perhaps what was identified under next steps that consultant faces have already happened. But this is such a significant report that I think council ought to avail itself of every opportunity to dig in a little deeper. And as a result, I would like to make the motion that committee direct administration to attempt to coordinate a workshop with Colliers project leaders, council and the Jasper community, Housing Corporation, to further review the report. Even in the discussion we've had here this afternoon, there has been enlightenment in my mind about what some of the numbers mean. Ready to move forward at budget time to look at options. I would like an opportunity to become more familiar with this report and we had probably less than an hour with the consultant. Today, I could easily see this taking a half day or a full day workshop so that we can become much more familiar with the issues that we're going to have to grapple with moving forward to direction. And again, I don't know whether there's budget for it. But if administration can coordinate a workshop, I think that would be healthy for council and council rarely gets an opportunity to sit with the Jasper community, Housing Corporation, maybe that's what would be would be beneficial from that perspective alone. If our recorded secretary got any of that, that long with the dress is my motion.
Any any debate? I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carried. I'm thinking that we now need a motion to extend the meeting beyond four hours.
I feel responsible only.
All in favor?
It doesn't have to be you, Melnick, does it?
They could all. Okay, I think then we move on to the commercial use of public space task force. CEO given.
Yes, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Council is obviously well aware of the saga of the commercial use of public space over the last couple of years. But one specific item that was left on the motion action list was the May 17th direction from council to administrations draft a terms of reference for task force to review the conditions that might be attached to discretionary use of the commercial use of public space in the future. And come back, and so administration is here today with the attached terms of reference. The terms of reference describe potential membership of the committee as well as the primary role and responsibility of task force. Basically, what happens is council tasking this group with doing. And so in terms of the primary responsibilities, And so in terms of the primary responsibilities, those are listed in the staff RFD. They would include undertaking a comprehensive review of the regulatory and legislative framework that applies to the commercial use of public space installations, because there are not just municipal bylaws that would apply. There are also in our national park context, Parks Canada and National Parks Act and motif. But there are also other national and provincial legislation that would apply in any other community outside of the national park, including building code, fire code, and all those sorts of things. So part of the discussion would have to be to understand what that framework is and what is unique to Jasper, what is optional, and what is not necessarily optional or would be required in any context. The second part would be researching best practices from other municipalities, considering the operational needs of businesses as relates to these types of spaces, considering the expectations and needs of residents and visitors, and considering the position of Jasper as an international destination within its unique national park environment. So pretty broad directions to the task force to explore this issue. And I believe that these we would leave the task force with pretty wide latitude to explore the the issue from a wide variety of aspects. The administration is proposing that that task force would be comprised of six voting members as supported by municipal administration. And the voting membership that's proposed in the terms of reference includes two members of Jasper council, two members of the Chamber of Commerce, and two members of tourism Jasper. Again, municipal administration would act as a resource, and Parks Canada could be invited to act as a subject matter expert with respect to the legislative context. Ultimately, the ultimate deliverable of the task force would be recommendations to council prior to October first, twenty twenty two for corporate standard for for future commercial use of public space installations. So by October of this year, the task force be obliged to provide recommendations to council, which council would then need to discuss with Parks Canada or advocate Parks Canada for consideration on recognizing that municipality alone does not have that legislative authority as we exist today. So that is a brief overview of the terms of reference, of the primary points of reference. Any of those items are obviously open for discussion, debate, or amendment by council. But administration has filled the draft as directed by committee, and it's here for your consideration.
What can I say? Questions? Council Wilson.
Just to comment on who would be voting members, I feel like like public at large or business income, the their voice being heard there. I would, I'm not sure how it would work, but I would recommend that maybe two members of public could be could apply to be for the task force. I think it might be a little weighted towards business rather than just rather than residents and government to the downtown. Also, I I think it would be great to hear voices from that are maybe as much financially motivated.
CEO given.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, I'd say that that certainly if council, that committee determined that that's appropriate, administration can act that, certainly appreciate the perspective, the council will assist to the board, and that would seem to be appropriate. Again, if in said, the direction administration could amend the terms of reference. Just in terms of process for today, I suggest that if there are specific amendments to the terms of reference like this, the inclusion of two public members, maybe after a round of discussion or during the discussion, you want to formalize those as portions. So something in the format of, I move to amend the terms of reference to change in whatever it is that you want to change. So in this example, if we amend the terms of reference to include the addition of two public members. That way, we can make sure as administration, we get sort of up down votes on on all the different items that that council might discuss. You certainly don't need to do that right now. I appreciate that maybe other things want to discuss before you get into voting. But when you're asking for amendments that will help administration, if it's clear whether that was a consensus that was supported by majority vote, or that was just an idea that somebody had, if people didn't say no to.
Councilor, do you want to?
Well, I I do. I do appreciate. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I do appreciate you know, what Council Wilson is saying. And I don't know if we're in the midst of debating the the material in in the terms of reference itself, but we are discussing it. You know what? I don't know where we draw the line. So if we, if, you know, six people apply it, four of them either own or manage a business, how do you say no to? I don't want you, and then we're going to take the other person, you know, because they automatically qualified for that having a business. So then it's still heavily weighted in the direction that, you know, Council Wilson's saying. So we we'd have to come up with some other way saying that or metric to get people to come on or not. So I'm not sure we take that step. And you know, there is a public input process through to to P E A C, and I think that's where a lot of our issues lie right now.
Other questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Three to Mr. Given. Can you give me some detail around one point, one point one, the comprehensive review of regulatory and legislative framework? Is that intended to mean the framework that applies here or that could apply or that we think should apply or might apply elsewhere?
Deputy Mayor Waxer for Mayor Ireland, the intent was to ensure that the members, the voting members of the committee would understand all of the legislation that applies to this type of use here in Jasper so that they can make informed recommendations. So if they said if it may not provide the value that we would wish if the committee came forward with a recommendation for something that was illegal on the face of it because of some existing legislation that we don't have the authority to change. So I think the intent, so the intent behind one point one is to ensure that the committee seeks to to understand the legal framework that we exist so that they can make recommendations with that knowledge. The recommendations may be that they fit perfectly within that legal framework, or they may be that the that we seek changes that legal framework. And I'll use something that is fully within our control. We have a bylaw, especially it's public space by law, that's fully within council's control. It does exist. It would probably be helpful for the both the members of the committee to be informed about what that bylaw says. One of the recommendations may be the municipal council consider changing that bylaw. So the the comprehensive review of the regulatory legislative framework would mean just that get an understanding of all the stuff that's in place right now that affects this before you start making recommendations and and use that knowledge to inform the types of recommendations that you're making.
Right. I appreciate that response. I think the task force might be challenged when it considers the framework which is applied as opposed to the legal framework overall. But that's fine. I understand where you're going. With respect to one point, one point two, I think I could make a motion now. Committee recommend council delete the word best. I think we know what best practices are until we've looked at them all. So I think we should research existing practices in other communities, in other municipalities. And then we will decide what is best. If you say that we research only best practices, I don't know how we would identify them. So I think it's a small matter, but I think that that word should come out, and we should simply investigate what other municipalities in fact do in any way. Hopefully, the task force will figure out what is best for Jasper. And finally, I, finally, I I just want to on record as saying, I I agree with the comments from Council Wilson that there does seem to be noticeable gap in respect to public participation in the broadest sense, recognizing that members of council, of course, represent the public interest. But also potentially missing are retailers who are not members of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not sure how anybody gets to be a representative of a group that doesn't exactly exist. But I think it is worth noting that without the broad and equitable representation, then the work of the task force might be at risk. And then finally, I would encourage that we look for a way to add three members as voting members so that we line up with a knowing number. Because six or eight, any even number is fraught with disaster.
CEO Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Just in terms of process and framing motions, I think at this level, anything that council wished to amend here could be move the committee amend the terms of reference. We don't need council to approve amendment. At the community level, amend the terms of reference, and then make the committee satisfied with it. The motion that committee recommend council approve the terms of reference has amended. Just in terms of process, we're looking to ease in visual amendment through council. Deal with the committee with to get terms of reference to make sure they're comfortable with them, and then send that.
Councilor, do you want to?
Thank you. Just just to get some more clarification in the tense of war debate on two point one point one, as far as the voting numbers. I haven't figured out the number just to balance this out in any area. You know, and then getting back to retailers that are not part of the chamber, there's also tourism, there's also businesses and members that or businesses in the community that aren't members of tourism Jasper. And so if we start funneling things out, you know, I don't, I think it would just be creating a lot more work to process. And I do want to congratulate and thank everybody that worked on this terms of reference to get it to where it is. I think it's it's a pretty good product. I do have a question for administration and just to help us out with again with two point one point one. Was there a reason that there weren't any community members at large on here? And what brought the three layers, you know, as part of the process was just something that you had addressed to create? Or was there some conscious effort behind the the three teams?
Deputy Mayor Waxer for council to know that. Take sort of a front approach that certainly there was conscious thought in putting together the recommendation. I think from an administrative perspective, I I would say that my observation was that the most interested parties are really represented there. The ones that council heard from both at the public hearing and in regular correspondence or the one, you know, with the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Jasper, I think it's fair comment and for observation that the public likely have an opinion, and it would be worthwhile to include them. But there wasn't anything beyond sort of administration saying, okay, so who are the who were the entities or where were the voices coming from that we could see wanted to be heard on this issue? And let's ensure that we start there. I think if council wants to expand the scope and with other voices, that makes a lot of sense. But there wasn't anything from administration other than saying, let's, who have we heard from on this previously? Let's ensure that those stakeholders are at the table. The one I appreciate what council said about identifying more and more specific groups that can become a challenge. The other challenge I think that I'd want to just counsel to consider is the actual size of of the group. You're a group of seven, and you know, the challenge that can be to to get toward everybody's calendars to a meeting time that that works for all of you, and the larger the group gets, that maybe that more challenging. That is not a, that is not a reason to not to do something, but I think it should be a consideration. It's just what is a manageable size and number of people that you would hope to coordinate schedules during a busy season with the intention of having some recommendations for the fall, so we don't end up in this situation again next year.
Other questions? I'll take the opportunity maybe to, I fully agree with Council Wilson on getting input from from residents. However, I wonder whether a community consultation event or something on the website where after the committee pulled something together might be a preferable approach to, so that you get a really broad perspective on from community members as to the proposed concept rather than having two members of the public who may or may not have strong thoughts entering the process. It's just that I wonder. Councilor, do you want to?
Yeah, I think that's that's really good. And and maybe if that takes place early. For me, again, to add more, like Mr. Given, it said, I do appreciate that we we need community input. And maybe I didn't issue that as something to that effect prior. Again, we do have, councillors are elected by the people to represent the people. And, you know, just to to keep that filter in the fact that, you know, regardless of what you do in the community, you know, you're also a resident. Sometimes your opinions on how you feel as a resident may differ that way. You think it's best for the community as a whole. So having that filter and going in to make decisions, I think that we're, we would still be well supported, the community would still be well supported by having two members of council on there and maybe not have other teams that are members at large. They said we had some public consultation prior to that, and then have council representatives, people that spoke. I think would be satisfying to what we're trying to achieve in a matter of time.
Councilor.
The only other item is October first timeline. I I know, I know the reason why we wanted to get it in front of council. Kind of in a good amount of time before the following season, but is that timeline a little tight? You know, recognizing that business owners are in their peak season as well as well, it's, yeah, just me in the summer, are we going to be able to get this task force together and and come up with enough work to by October first? I don't see it, but.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, that to Council Wilson's point there, I I think that that's a reasonable question. And I think that that's been the challenge with this program really since inception is the balance of, you know, the time where people are paying the most attention is when they're getting, you know, certain businesses is when they're getting to the crush of trying to get set up for the season, and then in the season and fully engaged and working long hours. And then after the close of the season, I think there's a bit of those, I would imagine, a relief and a bit of like need for some downtime. And then all of a sudden, we get into the holiday season, and it's January again, and people start to think of it in February, March, and there are processes with council. We have a regular meeting schedule, and, you know, and so it is this, it is a legitimate challenge. I'm not sure that administration has a good answer for that. I wouldn't, one perspective might be if that if this is truly important, then the business sector should be able to find somebody to represent their interests. But I appreciate that also comes against the hard reality of long hours during extreme busy season, particularly this year, which is, you know, forecast to be a very, very busy year. So that's all this sort of knows the truth of, of what Counsel Wilson is highlighting. I'm not certain that the administration has an answer for that. The council wanted to extend this timeline to say that it needs to be delivered by November or December. Of course, administration is technastic in terms of that timeline and would take council's direction. We started from a position of recognizing that everybody wanted to have certainty around this and that's certainly coming sooner to allow for any processes that would need to happen in terms of getting parks approved or amending municipal bylaws or whatever would have time to take place. So again, the administration proposed this timeline leaning towards the thought that all parties wanted to get the matter sorted out instead of needing to go into another season behind the fall, so to speak. But I appreciate the challenge of trying to get people engaged.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I'm going to speak in favor and I'm going to speak against some of Counsel Wilson's comments. Yes, I agree, we need other input, perhaps one, perhaps three, maybe chosen randomly. I don't agree with delaying. I think I'm already hearing from operators, when is this task force going to get going? I think we owe it to the operators to move prudently, meaning at the end of this meeting, if we can agree on if we're adding individuals, but I would not be in favor of delaying this task force anymore. And that we would work, I'm sure we'll find the operators are going to be wanting to also put this to bed as quick as possible.
Counselor Keller, hurry up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Treat you to Mr. Given. Parks Canada will be there on consulting basis. Will they have somebody impacted to the committee that they will resource their reach meeting room for industry port?
I think the preference from parks would be that it would be seen as a member of the committee, even in an ongoing capacity, that they would be a resource that could be called upon as needed. I don't believe municipal administration is in a position to put an expectation that they would attend on a regular basis, that council wished to request that, certainly council or they could. But as an organization, it'd be up to parks to decide whether they could actually resource that. We can speak to the work mode. I have spoken with my colleague, the manager of municipal immunity services. And she said that parks would be happy to support the work that the committee enacted as a consultant, if I can use that. A resource to provide information to the committee when requested.
Any further questions? I'll take this moment again myself under six, under the heading of reporting relationships. My eyes keep being drawn to that because I think the, the patio and public use of, or, yeah. That this issue is very important to a lot of residents. I just wonder whether we, the task force will present a preferred approach at a community consultation, if we added something like that in there. I do think that that would be an ask, I think that would be the desire by the community.
I guess what just popped in my head was that we're asking this task force to report back to the council, that that could be that public, that, you know. Public consultation.
See you again.
Yeah, additionally, Deputy Mayor Waxer, I think the task force is, is created by council and as applied, provides recommendations to council. But council chooses to do those recommendations of what additional public consultation council would wish to, you know, what additional scrutiny council would want to put those recommendations under, would be up to council at that time. So the task force provides recommendations to council in October. Council says, thank you very much, administration, for these recommendations to community consultation, community consultation or through some form or conversations and provide information back to council. So prior to dealing with or adopting or applying the recommendations, council could direct administration to test those recommendations at whatever stage.
Thank you. Any further questions or thoughts?
Your Honor. I'm not entirely clear where we are in terms of amendments, so I would like to go through. Just make sure that administration has clarity before this goes back to council next week, but I would like to add one, which is in one point one, where it says prior to October first, 2022, an appropriate standard for future commercial use of space installations. I wonder whether that might be slightly changed to say appropriate standards. Because it strikes me that there might be a different standard for sidewalk than curving. A suggestion that there is one standard only. Perhaps this would be slight change, but it was one that I would recommend as a, as an amendment.
See you again.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, a mirror of the desk to where we stood on amendments, there haven't been any that have been, that have been posed by a motion, there's been some discussion and this is that, probably that point at the meeting where there's been an inter discussion and now if there are specific amendments that people wish to make, it may be easier to deal with them, you know, sort of one by one. And then when the committee is satisfied with that amended version would reflect, would you like to send over a council, then a motion to prefer the, sort of the fact that council approved the terms of reference as amended. So now we're going to have to clear out all the amendments.
Counselor Nelson.
Well, I was actually gonna, we still have this challenge with eight members or six members. Do you add one, delete one? Just reported this.
Counselor Demora.
Thank you. Yes, I, I agree with Counsel Wilson and I'm not sure where you want to put the weight. But then if you do add one to every representing group, then then we're increasing the system substantially.
See you again.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, just for community's consideration. As municipal government, you know, we are governed by the legislation to have that one number to ensure that there's never sort of a drill, but it can happen, or absence and we end up having a double fail. There is potentially a, a benefit to having an even number because it would require that you need to establish some form of consensus rather than just a simple majority. So that, that actually, per consideration, rather than trying to figure out how to make an odd number, maybe council could lead into the idea that having an even number means that if there is a disagreement, you would have to work to apply, where you would find something where you could, you know, get enough people to support that. So certainly administration can take any direction on that. But an even number is not necessarily, doesn't necessarily prevent the committee from establishing consensus. In fact, it might support establishing consensus.
Counselor Demora.
Well, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Waxer, I'd like to work with you on amending this slightly to include some that would be consultation, whether, you know, the actual terms of reference needs to have it there. I think that if we're not going to consider voting members with, you know, from the, the community, I would suggest that maybe in one of these steps that we should add, maybe after number three or even prior to, after membership to, to have some type of consultation aspect as, as an actual point in the terms of reference.
Counselor Keller.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, I have a conference at three o'clock that I have to attend and I'll go to attend the, I think it's in that, or party.
Absolutely. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, with respect to Counsel Demora's suggestion. I am opposed to putting that burden on the task force, that is uniquely the duty of council. And comfortable, as Counsel Melnick indicated, we're maintaining October first as a report date, at which time, once it receives the report, the recommendation from the task force, council will, as it always is, be uniquely positioned to decide whether or not we should take that out to public consultation. In particular, given what he has a bit of a short time for him to expect a task force to also run a public consultation meeting in the middle of a big summer, I think this is far too long. But if there's a need for public consultation at the end, that is council's job, that is our role. And we will have two council members on the task force, but all of council will receive the reports. So I am comfortable that at the end of the day, council can decide whether further public consultation is needed, but I am not comfortable leaving that to the task force.
Any other amendments then?
I will make a motion and others can correct me as I move along and touch something on my whole ass, please. Forty pages. Who did this to us?
You want to go to one thirty-two?
Yes. All right. The motion will be that committee amend the proposed terms of reference in section one point one by changing the words appropriate standard to appropriate standards. In one point one point two, by deleting the word best. And I will leave it, but I will accept as the amendments, anything that anybody is able to concur to vote, item two, membership. I, I was persuaded ultimately by Mr. Given, even though he's not part of the debate, Jazz, perhaps an even number of forces, consensus in a way that would be beneficial. I could be persuaded against that, but it is a never ending discussion if we get into who and how many.
Counselor Demora.
Well, I'm okay with energying those motions, or that motion with those two changes. And if anybody wants to put another motion, we change that. Multi-vital, not getting into, to debate that.
Okay, if there's no further, then I'll call the question with the, the two amendments. All in favor? Or she carried? Then I guess we move on to the Alberta Japan Twinning Museums Association.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, if, if the committee is satisfied with those amendments, then we're not the others, but if we was satisfied with those amendments, then it would be that step of committee recommending council approve the terms of reference as, so it doesn't need to go from here up to.
Okay. Sorry, I thought we were just adding that with to the, I would someone be happy to make that motion then? Counselor Melnick. Counselor Melnick. All in favor?
For me, if, if for some reason I can't be here, when we decide who's going to be on that committee and representing council, I'd like to hold the need for it because I have a lot of experience in that district and, you know, and maybe having somebody that isn't as experienced in that area, downtown, downtown core with working, representing those businesses on the streets, that could add a different aspect to this, regardless of what it is. I think that there should be somebody there that doesn't have a lot of experience, that somebody that might not have as much.
Thank you. I guess we'll move on to the Alberta Japan Twinning Museums Association. Just in due diligence, I passed on the information that we, we gleaned from our, Counselor Melnick and I gleaned from our attendance at the conference. And you will notice at the end of my report, I, we, I articulated the the thought, the action items that we thought would be valuable to improving our conversation and I'll pass it to Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Yes, thank you. The report is quite concise as to a summary of what occurred during the time that we were in Tabor. And there are some things that we can do immediately to enhance our relationship and to highlight it. Most specifically is to use our website to highlight that relationship and, and continue to refer to it in future opportunities when we're talking about relationships. The other thing is this is our, our year where we are celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Twinning relationship. And I would like to suggest that administration assist council to be able to send a message to Hakoni, whether it be a, a video message, celebrating and, and acknowledging the relationship between our two cities in order to establish yet a further, a stronger relationship and, and hoping that we'll have the opportunity to start the steps to, to do a visit to Hakoni in the, in the near future. And I understand that they are to travel here first, am I aware to travel to, to Hakoni? So with that celebration message of, of the 50th anniversary, perhaps we could do some initial steps in trying to establish with them when an appropriate period would be for the delegation to attend.
Questions? Aaron.
Thank you both. I appreciate the report, the work you put into it and the time and effort you put into your your trip to Tabor. It's all very much appreciated. It's great to have the report with the recommendations and I will make a motion that council receive the report for information and direct administration to all items one in the recommendations to update the M O G profile on the website, if that is something that we can do. Send an updated flag. I'm not sure if that means one with a fringe or not. Apparently not. I'm not. No fringes. The possibility of hosting a future conference should probably come back to committee. Profiling our relationship was simply we could direct to administration. And developing a video, I think, is an excellent idea. Time is short. Our actual anniversary of the fiftieth anniversary of the Twinning falls on July fourth. But it might be possible to get something prepared in that short order. And there are still members of the community who were part of that initial delegation. We should be sure to include them in a video presentation that we might develop to the extent we can.
Counselor Demoto.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, have any other council representatives where the other municipalities?
We we had a combination of councils and also committees. Not every municipality said council members. So the relationships with each within each municipality is is different for each municipality. And I believe there were eight municipalities that were represented in Tabor. Thank you very much.
So are you clear? No, you're not.
The motion. You're not clear on the motion. I don't understand why. So the motion is that I suppose it's committee recommend council receive the report for information and that committee direct administration with respect to items one, two, four, and five of the recommendations. And that item number three, be referred to a future committee to hold the discussion.
Any debate request? A call question then? All in favor? Motion carried. Move on to correspondence. Motion action list. Aaron.
Well, just because we have united for correspondence and there's nothing listed. However, I did note in a minutes from the last committee to call. It was a motion to direct administration to report back with respect to options to prepare municipal position regarding private home accommodation. And very recently, I noted that council received an inquiry from the residents regarding our position on private home accommodation. And I haven't seen any response. I think it was a question directed more to council perhaps than to administration. But I I just wonder whether, speaking of correspondence, we might confirm that that direction to administration to prepare a response might be passed on to the resident so that they are aware of that. It's still a work in progress. I don't have that piece of correspondence at my fingertips, but it seemed to be requesting information for where council stands as of today with respect to private home accommodation. And my recollection is that we are still building that position.
See you again.
Deputy Mayor Wexler, yes, administration's where the correspondence that Mayor is referring to was received late last week and will be on the council agenda next week. So council have an opportunity to receive it and direct administration to take any course action, which could include just providing the resident with, you know, the motion, the items of the motion action list, the actions that council already directed or could include anything else. But administration does have that correspondence. It will appear on the upcoming regular council.
Thank you, that's.
Thank you. I guess we move then to motion action list.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wexler. So I will try to be brief. There are a couple of events that I could provide some updates on. The first is parcel G V development integration. Administration made an additional inquiry with developer. They are continuing through their process with Parks Canada. I heard on both sides of that equation, the developer and Parks Canada, they're very close. Developer said that as soon as they have accepted the version by Parks Canada, that they would have to share that with us. So we appreciate that direction was not set sort of on them, but we are checking with them at the time. So that process is underway and when there's information to bring to multiple forms, we'll do so. The item called current space number twenty-six, administration suggested can be completed, that direction for the five for an amendment for discussion experiment after a couple of steps that was received. So that item could be deleted. Also, at the very bottom of that first page, there was the item related to the task force terms of reference. So that was delivered here today and could come off the list. With respect to the utilities F A Qs and info package on the municipal website, we received that direction from council to establish frequent ask questions with responses and information package for residents publicly available on the website. It does exist. That was published late last week. I want to thank Amanda and the team for their work in putting that together for council information. Information that's intended to be a living document and a living resource where as we receive additional questions, that will be updating that. So council can use that as a resource in session to the community or the community can use that as a place to find additional information around the new utility rate model and the common ask question. So administration suggested that action had been taken, this had come off the list. And that F A Qs will be updated on a, as a basis of questions. But that had that direction from council has been actioned and has happened. With respect to the public transportation item from May twenty-fourth, the committee direct administration issue R P for the public transportation system, please do let's say that R P has been posted, is up, will be open for a couple of weeks and administration will bring forward any outcomes recommendations of who you will award that to to a future community hall meeting. So that first portion is completed. And we're working on the M O D reports Canada still. And then finally, the last item around private home accommodations and licenses just from our meeting last week, council director administration inquire with Parks Canada about the status of the auditorium from twenty twenty, we sent over that request and just waiting for response. So I'm willing to receive that. I'll apply that information to council. But in terms of the items that could be deleted, there are the current use of public space item from April twenty-sixth. The Parks Canada discretionary use permit application amendments from May seventeenth. The utilities F A Qs and info package on the website from May seventeen. And that first portion of the public transportation related to issuing of your R P. Those would be the amendments that administration would suggest could be made to the motion actionist.
Any questions or comments? So could, would someone like to make a motion to approve the updated motion action list? So Counselor Melnick? All in favor? Counselor, representation on various boards, committees in upcoming meetings. Does anyone have anything to report? Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wexler. I attended a library board meeting last Wednesday and they have filled one vacant position. So that's very promising. And I will repeat this up completely good. So this Saturday is the used leather use sale starting at kind of on.
And yeah. I can report that we had a first H R committee meeting last week and elected me as chair. And start starting on our our work plan. And the other, Mayor.
I have noted there's an arts and culture community conversation tomorrow and who called, is that one? Can you see it? I will be attending a tourism master plan steering meeting. That is something that we out of the economic recovery task force. Mr. Given and I will sit in steering committee. That's coming up later this week. I have a Jasper early learning childcare strategy session in my calendar at the goal council. If anybody to that. I have that as one o'clock on June sixteen. And I think the rest is not, not there also. Of course, next week, on Monday, we will raise the every child mattress flag at the fight for on the eighth and fire hall at eleven forty-five. And Tuesday next week is National Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I am committed to an event Robson Park as a committee, commencement at one o'clock. Which you are all welcome, but I will likely not make call to order at one thirty. So I will be back in your hands, Deputy Mayor Wexler. For those interested, the Coleroy she graduation is twenty-fourth. And the Jasper Junior Senior High School graduation is Wednesday, June twenty-ninth at one o'clock. It's the captain down ceremony. That's it for me for upcoming days. Is that really a a recent?
Thank you. Any other reports? Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, G twenty-third is the Queen of Futures West Young with annual general meeting in April. I'm attending for Council currently. But I do believe all of council is invited. If anybody should do that.
Counselor Melnick.
We have a busy little three-day period coming up here. This evening I have the Jasper Yellowhead monthly meeting, board meeting. Tomorrow, we have the flag raising for the recognition of our evacuees here in the community from the Ukraine. There's also recreation, community conversations occurring at three thirty in Activity Center, which I'll attend. And I'll be joining you at the Jasper Early Learning and Childcare Strategy Zoom meeting.
I think that's all. Does everyone have the opportunity? Then could I have someone to move that committee move in camera to discuss the strategic plan with me? All in favor? And I believe that we have, will have no further business to conduct at the conclusion of that in-camera session.